Okay, I'll call this a special meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. We have the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Liza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wayne? Any discussion? Say none, Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Preliminary budget hearing. Being there's nobody here, we can dive right in.
Okay, so what you guys have in front of you is kind of what I sent out in the email and that's the request with all of the large projects to the department heads have in mind. Granted, that's also with some of the possible funds that we're looking at. I included the twenty eighty grant for the bridges that we still haven't approved or haven't been approved for. And then also some prairie dog fund which I believe is on House Bill sixteen oh six that the legislature passed. For non-oil filled counties. They've been saying that we've been possibly going to get that for a few years, so other auditors haven't, didn't put it in their budget. I added it in here just to kind of see, just because of the request was so astronomical for the road department. Now, I did make some adjustments with the whole budget here and that'll, they'll be bringing that in shortly after they get done printing those off. But you can see on... Yeah. If we start with that road budget. I still kept that grant which I believe they said was about the six hundred and eighty thousand as revenue. But I did take the prairie dog funds off of there, that's that House Bill.
Which page are you on, Sam?
Yeah, which page?
I'm sorry, I can't read it either.
I'm sorry. I am on page... Ten.
Four nine, nine or ten?
Alright, thank you, Sam.
Yep. I took those off there and then I did make some adjustments from the secondary road levy and the... State, is it state levy here? Because we were maxed out on all of our levies.
On the road.
For, yeah, Fed aid and the unorganized roads were maxed out to be able to fund that road department request. That would have brought our max levies up from, well, twelve point five one and seven point seven eight from last year, all the way up to fifteen and eighteen mils. So that would have saved, if you had like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that would have added another hundred and fifty dollars to your taxes with those two mils maxed out. Including maxing out the ten mils for the road fund.
Okay, before we get too much further, what did we have for total mils last year?
Total mils last year?
Do you have that? I always like to compare the previous year and see where we're trending.
Yes. I agree.
Must have hashed over that about ten times, right?
Yeah, I, I want to say our total was like one fourteen roughly last year, but you know how memory goes.
I know.
Right, I'm like...
And, and that was everything.
Oh, a total of everything, so I have one down here. We were at forty eight point six three for the general fund.
Forty eight what, six three?
Six three.
Forty eight point six three.
Okay, and that was general.
Road department was nine point five six. Unorganized roads was twelve point five one. Aid to secondary roads was seven point seven eight. Do you want all the non-revenue accounts too?
Um...
As you were saying you wanted.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what our total mills.
Just the total, grand total at the very end.
Okay, capital projects, four point eight.
Yeah.
Library, three point four seven. This is historical society. Point two one. Uh, commission on aging, two.
Two mils.
Two mils, yes. Water resource district, two point seven three. Custer health, two point eight three. Ambulance, four point eight nine. Veteran services, point one five. County airport, two point three five. County agent, two mils.
I have weed board.
Weed control is three mils. That should be, that should cover it.
I think that's it.
I was gonna say, let's both do it and...
See smoke coming out of that calculator.
Yeah, I got a full battery.
And I, I also just have a general question, is our, um, how are all our departments on the budget? Are they all over? Do we have two that are like way over? I haven't reviewed this.
So, um, yeah, I sent out also with the, that, a little sheet that kind of compared from last year to this year. The board was looking at a seven point three four percent increase. I did make some adjustments on the board. Um, I was advised that since we possibly have three new board members coming on in December, that the travel, I believe it's travel per diem and training, I'd upped it just a, a little bit on that.
This the new one?
Yeah, if, that's what Glenn just probably asked.
Yeah, I saw that, I was wondering where that increase was, but that's...
So, man, this one here, I can leave aside?
Thank you.
The one that we had laying here?
Well, but we're gonna compare them.
Okay.
Because I made some adjustments on, with my, under my discretion, but it's ultimately up to you guys.
Yeah.
So, that's why I wanted you to see what everybody's requesting and what we can and cannot possibly.
I got that. So I'm moving backwards.
That's why I'm asking, is it specific departments that are way over, or if it's...
Correct, so the, the, the general, uh, the main departments that are looking for a hu- um, I guess, bigger increase than last year are gonna be the building department because Jim is wanting to replace the boilers. The landfill because Candy has that cat project. And, uh, the sheriff's department, they added a new, um, employee there and made some, a few adjustments, increases. And then the road department is almost doubled.
I had three forty seven for library.
Yep, library's three forty seven.
Okay. Yours is right then.
Okay.
And that came off to...
One oh six ninety one.
One oh six ninety one.
One oh six, okay.
Um, I don't suppose you have a total for twenty three, where are we set right now?
Um, no, but I can get that together, I'm just gonna look off.
I mean, if you read off the same thing again?
Okay.
Um, we'll total it.
I'm gonna read it off of, do you want the, the first one? The fir- the one that we're looking at the cap?
The, the first one, yep, before your changes.
Before the adjustments, yeah.
Cause this will, this will let us know where the increases are.
How far we're...
And then we can say like, well, we're this one, this is the most we can do, so we gotta cut here.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I'm kind of that systematic approach kind of person. It's what I do.
You want this red part of that ink pen?
I should have brought my multicolor one.
Okay. General fund, eighty point nine six. And our max mils is only sixty. So before we can approve it, we have to get that down. Road department, thirty five point three eight, which our max is only ten mils. Unorganized roads, seventeen point nine two. Which our max is eighteen. Secondary to secondary roads is fourteen point three eight, our max is fifteen.
Fourteen point three eight.
Yep.
Correct. Um, let's see, let me... Capital projects, four point six nine. Library, three point zero seven. Historical society, point two three. Commission on aging, two. Water resource district, two point eight one. Custer health, two point five six. Ambulance, three point two eight. Veteran services. I have point five here, but I wonder if I didn't go over last year's. Uh, veteran services, point seven eight. County airport, one point nine four. This is...
Last year, you said the airport was two point three five?
Yep.
Now it's one point nine four.
I have three there. Commission on aging is two, correct? Yes.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Two, three.
Yep.
Water resource, two point eight one.
Yep.
Custer health, two point five six.
Mm-hmm.
Ambulance, three point two eight.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I thought we would change that. I think somebody got wonky here. County agent, one point nine five. Weed control, three point eight eight. Uh, that should be the last one.
Yeah, I don't even think it's worth totaling that because we got a couple that are over max.
Really over max.
Yeah.
And then if, to reiterate if I'm, got this right, last year our general fund was forty eight sixty three?
Yep.
Correct.
Road was nine five six, twelve point five one, seven seven eight, okay.
And also emergency management. Um, Carmen was asking for an extra employee, so that added to the...
Is that on the general, or what's that on?
Under the general.
General.
Yep.
Did we get Cindy up to where she should be?
So Cindy, I put, um...
Careful how you word that.
Well, and, and Jen too.
Liza?
They both have certifications that make them so invaluable.
Okay, so just, to kind of go over a little bit of, I made a few adjustments, like I said, on the board appointees, um, expenditures. I bumped up the travel and per diem, um, from two thousand to three thousand, and education and training from four hundred to six hundred. Like I said, just because we, there's a possibility that we might have three extra, or three new commissioners. Um, also, I had to make an adjustment on my, uh, deputy salaries. There, this was before, um, Alice was planning on leaving, but she had had a contract with Shiana that she was going to get a raise. So, I adjusted that in and then she, now she, but now she's leaving, but I'm just letting you know that that adjustment is still in there. I can bump that back down though. And then, let's see, you were asking about, oh, um, also Jim Albers wanted to keep his salaries the same from last year, so that was, uh, different than what's on your guys'... But, um, department head worksheets. Alright, so going to Cindy. We, I calculated a level seven which would bump her up to thirty two twenty four, then I calculated the seventy five cent cost of living that you're possibly looking at giving, and then incorporated her land administration into one, combined that into one position.
Cause it should have been done that way before, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Cause there's no way for us with the software that we're using to...
Could push both.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so Cindy's...
That's, yeah, that's, if, if that's what you guys want to approve, she went from a level, I believe, those three and then we, I bumped it up to a seven.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, I wasn't here at the time, but I'm wondering what happened is, she would have taken that position, then she would have taken classes to get the certifications for the accessory.
And once the certs came in, it didn't get adjusted.
It didn't get adjusted.
Right, yeah, she, right, she, yeah.
But she...
You're, you're just right, that adjustment should have been done a long, long time ago after that certification and...
I just think she makes a very valid point when she was in here before that she should be.
Yeah.
Well, without, you know, we, we're old school here, but we had Colleen, or Colette.
Colette, yeah, and she had the certifications before she came.
Yep, it's very valuable, then she had to train up and get her test and like you said, and she, uh, and it, well, there was, there was issues on this particular, so...
Well, yeah.
Now, and this is also just going...
I just want to get it remedied.
Yeah, we need to get that.
This is just also going from that budget chart that was done eight years ago.
Right.
Right.
So...
Yeah, and we, we can't make the change today cause it's not on the budget, but on our next meeting, we should probably have that on the agenda. To correct their salaries.
Yeah.
Well, that would, uh, wouldn't that, we would put that into next year's budget?
Well, we're talking in next year's budget, but we're also talking to, to, uh, correct it this year.
Or effectively immediately.
Her first. So also Todd is saying that since, uh, that he believes that we all could have to do the same thing for Jim Albers since he holds the two different positions.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and I'm saying we can't decide at this meeting, cause we have a special meeting, but it could be on the agenda for the next one.
Yeah. Yeah.
And just so, I did, hopefully I did the numbers correctly this time, but there's a difference of sixty eight point nine two mils. Cause I came up with one seventy five eighty three for what we have right now, so it's significantly...
Oh, yeah.
Over.
Yeah, and that's probably more than we can tax.
There's...
Some, yeah, something's gonna...
Well, then we already know we have to adjust the general fund and the road and probably unauthorized for sure too, because those are... Ones close to being at max.
And that's also including, cause Marv had mentioned that he wanted a fifteen percent reserve in the general fund and a thirty percent reserve with the road department.
Yeah, and I just don't think that's gonna be possible.
It's not gonna be feasible.
I don't see how it's gonna be feasible.
Based on looking at the front of this, that's not gonna happen.
And looking at last year's, there is no reserve for the road department. So when I, when I went through and made some adjustments, I kept the general fund at ten percent, which I know is a little bit on the low side, and I believe I have the road department also at twelve percent, actually.
And, you know, as we mentioned before, there are some projects on the road that just aren't gonna happen.
Yeah.
And that's what we're gonna have to figure out, what, what goes and what don't go.
Just for the other commissioners, I don't know if it means anything or not, I did, other county levies, I totaled, uh, them up for this year and for last year, and it's actually lower for this year than last year. If I, um, did it right, so it looks like our, um, major one is the road.
The road and the general.
The road and the general, yes.
Yeah, cause if you look at them, they're...
Yeah.
I think everybody, yeah, it seems like everybody...
I think the rest, the rest lined up pretty, uh, pretty close.
So...
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So when I went through and made adjustments, um, I, we can start with the general fund here. I wasn't able to leave in any of the big projects that the department heads were requesting to keep it under the sixty mils. That's not being able to include, that's cutting the building request for the, um...
Boiler.
Boilers, that's cutting Carmen's extra position. Um...
And the landfill?
The landfill? I, that was, so she's got that MSW pit which is gonna be like a hundred and... What is she requesting? So she, what worries me about the landfill, she says she's gonna be out of compliance, so that means the state is probably going to,
Right.
possibly going to close it until that gets taken care of. And she said that to cap the MSW would be about a hundred and forty two thousand. The only way to keep her in budget was I could only up her, uh, payments to contractors twenty thousand more than what we normally do to keep her under budget and not going over.
Okay, but the landfill doesn't, doesn't get tax revenue?
No.
Right.
So...
And that's just with her revenue coming in.
Mm-hmm.
But we have that extra ARPA funds, I would like to keep that allocated to new software, but if we could, it's possibility that we could put a hundred thousand to the landfill, that would cover just the MSW, and then that would leave us a hundred and eighty seven thousand for software. I was trying to find her, Shiana's quote that she had received, we couldn't find it, but we were, off the top of Gwen's head, she was saying that she was gonna probably take the rest of that ARPA fund.
Explain, can you help me out with explaining to me where, what ARPA fund you're talking about?
The Fed ARPA fund.
Pardon me?
After the, um, allocations of the landfill and the building, we have two hundred and eighty seven thousand left. I'm just giving some ideas about where we can use up those funds.
How is the, uh, income to expense on the landfill, is it, where's that at?
Okay, if you go to page...
Cause it's supposed to be...
Self-sufficient, but...
Yeah.
Right, that's what I mean, so if we're looking at the revenue that they generate, we would not be able to use any extra funds to go towards a capping project, that would put them over, over their budget. If you look at page seventy two, it shows their revenue and their expenditures. And look what they have right now, like I said, I bumped up... Payments to contractors, it was, I bumped it from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand, but that doesn't touch what she needs for the hundred and forty two for this capping project.
Explain to me the hundred and forty two thousand project?
Yeah, she had attached this with her budget work, she, she's got three point five acres, three point five five acres of MSW that still needs to be capped and two point seven acres of inert that needs to be capped. And she had received a quote from Sherwin, um, to be, to cap those, which would keep her in compliance with the state, would be a hundred and forty two thousand for the MSW and a hundred and eight thousand for the inert. In her message, she said, uh, there is an attached sheet for capping project, we probably have to cap some of MSW areas, so we are in compliance with our landfill permit. So there's too much open face.
We didn't know this prior to giving all that money for the expansion?
For the cell project?
Mm-hmm.
Looked on my sign.
So, she needs a hundred...
What was the money for the MSW, cause she only mentioned the MSW, what's that?
Yep, the MSW is a hundred and forty two thousand.
What does she need so she's in compliance, what's the minimum she needs to be in compliance?
It sounds like she needs to cover at least the MSW.
A hundred and forty two thousand.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Right.
Now, I don't know if that include, uh, she's... Does she have dirt up at the landfill? Normally you're supposed to have a dirt pile.
She does.
Yep.
Yeah, she does.
Now, so is it a possibility, and I know that her and Ken have been going back and forth about this, having, you know, use a couple of trucks up there and help her cover that stuff, or, you know, why are we contracting out?
Typically it's supposed to be, like Travis was saying, it's a non-tax supported business. And, uh, not supposed to be, well, eleven twenty three oh seven says not to use road funds for...
Yeah.
But they, but Marv, they, they could hire the road department, it's always cheaper than hiring the private contractors, is what I'm... That's right, they can hire them. Yeah, I mean, that, they're not gonna just do it for nothing, they're gonna get paid less.
So then we would have to get an estimate from Ken?
Right.
But it still has to be done, that...
Yeah.
Right, bottom line is, it has to be done, cause we have to have her in compliance, or otherwise where can I have a place to put?
Is there any special certifications that the contractor has to have in order to work on landfills?
I don't know.
I mean...
He's the one who's been, who, he, this is the same contractor that did the cell, so I'm assuming he's got to correct.
Well, I mean, he does, I'm saying, like, if we said the road department is the road department qualified to do it.
If we did the road department, would that...
But then why, yeah, I mean... Or is it the lack of, you know, employees and time? I don't know why this isn't getting covered, you know? This, these are questions that I would have for Candy, but...
Well...
There's usually a certain time constraint that you have on keeping everything covered, so...
Correct.
Well, there's, they're still covering, but capping is completely different.
Yeah. Capping is a whole different...
I would say, these are, right.
We got apples, oranges, and grapefruit.
So is that part of the closure, closing?
Yes, yes.
It would be, right.
For cells one and two, I think it was, or was it just cell one, the one on the corner there?
Can we use our closure funds for this?
So, yeah.
And how much do we have in the closure fund?
Yeah, I mean, there's an operation closure fund.
There it is.
I don't, it doesn't tell you what's in there.
Hundred and sixty six thousand was at the end of the year.
End of twenty one?
Yep, that's part of the independent auditor, I don't have a sheet with me, but I have it memorized now.
Hundred and sixty six. Well, I mean, that's close enough.
Cause this shows...
Um, Samantha, you and I have been communicating a little bit on, uh, the state sent us a letter. They were investigating what we needed to be to make sure that we had enough money in our closure and post-closure funds. Did you, did, did we ever get to that?
I don't have the exact number on that account.
So, the reason I was asking that is, that would help determine whether we can use that closure fund, cause we have to have so much in there.
And say there's a certain amount that needs to be remaining in there, yeah.
Measure of, yes, right, yep. By state law. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, uh, how, how we came to certain things, so if we are expecting funds from different areas, are those revenues figured in when we do the mill levy, or are they just off to the side?
I'm sorry, Vanessa?
So, um, like, we have these numbers for the general fund, the road fund, um, when we talk expenses versus revenues, and the revenues, are we figuring in a non-taxable revenue? Meaning, if we got ARPA funds in there, is that in the calculation that is calculated?
So I show, I kind of broke it down for you in there where I was looking at those funds for the revenue. Now, like I said, that's...
But, but I mean, when you get to the bottom, is that figured in that we need this amount of money and then it calculates out the mils, because...
That's including your revenue and then your expenditures, and then how many mils that you need to levy in to, to fund that account.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is if we have not... Right, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is if we have non-taxable funds coming in, they can't be in the calculation to figure out the mills.
Right, they're not in there.
Okay.
Okay, so like our ARPA money and stuff is not in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
There's two things here that uh, you know, we, we're, we're kinda pinched, but we still have to respond and take care of the responsibility. The uh, we have the two eighty-seven five ARPA funds remaining. In order to be in compliance with the information that we have, we need a hundred and forty-two, that gives us, leaves us a hundred and forty-five, five seventy in ARPA. That we could still use towards tax and financial software. Um, it's absolutely necessary that we keep the landfill functioning. One of the questions that comes to my mind though is. Are we able to use the ARPA funds for that particular use? Now, when we did the other landfill work, I ca- contacted the DACO and confirmed that that was okay.
Yeah, for the cells.
But we had, you know, we had some notice there.
Right.
Telling whether we can use this. So we have two questions, one, can we use ARPA?
And how much of the closure fund can we use?
And the other, can we use the closure?
Yep.
And then, there's actually a third question. When we did the landfill the first time. We went through the SR, the State Revolving Fund, the SRF program, because we were told if it met, met the SRF funding program. Then ARPA could be used.
Right.
We can still use SRF to assist us in funding the landfill. However, it's not a grant, it's essentially a loan. Back to Jean's question, I don't know if it really got answered. Is the landfill in a position where you have a positive flow, cash flow, where you have a positive uh margin? If you have a positive margin, then you could utilize a loan to make this work happen. And still have the ARPA funding for the software.
The software.
Um.
Or maybe too, if it's a combination of part closure fund, part loan.
Right. What, what I'm saying is we need to look at multiple options to make.
We need to get some access, yeah.
Um, things happen that we don't have necessarily the tax fees to do.
I just get a little bit of, you know. Nor do I wanna, I'm not, I don't even know where to, too many. I hear where we say the um landfill is supposed to be self-sustaining, and then I hear us talking about taking like ARPA money to help pay some of the bills. Well, if it's supposed to be self-sustaining, then we shouldn't be taking any money out of any other source to stick into the landfill. That, we need to figure, i- if the landfill, I'm gonna be just probably too upfront, but if the landfill's not paying for itself. We either gotta up the fees or close the landfill and not support a land, a county landfill. We, we can't be take. The way I understand this and the way I'm told is, we're not supposed to be taking any taxpayer money and sticking it into the landfill. Am I, is, is that a yes or a no?
In my opinion, it's absolutely correct.
So if the landfill, either the fees gotta go up, we, we need to make some changes there. So that its revenues pay for its expenses. And if not, it's not possible. Then our county residents are, I mean, we're, we're gonna have, I hate to say it this way, but we close the darn thing.
But, the other part of that whole, I, I understand that, but there is a, another catch there. I mean, these are big projects, to cap this thing or to do a sell, how is they gonna have a hundred and, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in reserve? They are not, they're gonna have to make a loan somehow to, to continue to operate and, and like Travis was saying. Are they positive enough that they can pay back the loan? Because there's no way they can have that amount of mon- money sitting in a piggy bank. Uh, on the.
Marv, can I ask where you got your numbers for the closure account?
I agree with you, Wayne. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with that, but still in the end, if they, if they have to borrow the money, so be it. But they have to generate enough revenue to make that payment.
They gotta pay that payment back, yes, absolutely.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you Samantha, go ahead.
It's alright, I can wait. Um, the numbers I got from our independent audit report, in the closure fund, I'm going from memory, but I'm pretty darn close.
Okay.
Uh, the closure fund was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, that's fund eighty forty-nine. And then fund eighty fifty is the one we talked about at our last meeting, and that's roughly eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah, okay.
How much has to stay in there?
That's something we'd have to look at.
That's one of our questions.
That's the letter, that's the letter I got from the state that said that, and prior to Samantha, it was sent here, and I haven't been able to get a copy of it yet. We've been working on it, but we have the information, just not here today.
Okay.
But, go ahead.
Going with that solvency, I agree with, with Jean. Now, the other part, I'm gonna really twist this up. We have to have a budget by August tenth for the county. Do we have to have one for the landfill by August tenth? That's not a county tax-supported business.
Right.
True.
True.
So in other words, we can still have a week or two, maybe, I don't know when, when you're after close.
Just see if we can.
To get a solvency study done, to see where we're at, just what Jean was talking about.
Well, and that solvency would be part of any SR, SRF application.
Mm-hmm.
Which then, that study would tell you if you needed to increase fees to make that work. And, and I think we're kinda all on the same page, we're just saying it a different way, but. Um, what I'm getting at is that, I don't think anybody's really in favor of using the ARPA funds on the landfill.
Right.
I think we're better off going down the SRF route and taking a loan out for the landfill to make these closures happen. And as part of that study, um you can amortize that o- over a certain amount of time. So, I mean, you can go five years, you can go twenty, twenty's usually the max on that, and there's no penalty for early repayment. And with SRF, it's generally, generally around a two percent loan rate, so you're not, you're not gonna get that.
Anywhere.
Anywhere else right now, so. And that essentially keeps the landfill its own entity and it's not supported by any other.
By federal funds or state funds, yeah.
Which is what it's supposed to do, yeah.
What I would like, what I would like to do is pursue whether we have to have this landfill done today. Can we get that answered? That'll move us on to our budget. Cause the question's we can't answer today, unless you, do you know, anybody have the answers to them?
Well, eighty forty-nine account has a hundred and ninety-six thousand in it right now.
Okay.
Eighty fifty has eighty-seven, one eighty-four, seventy.
Repeat eighty forty, one ninety-six, you said?
One ninety-six. So if we could use those funds, depending on what we have to leave in there.
Yeah, which those funds could be used for the repayment portion of it.
If po- possibly. Now, because of the size of our landfill, that determines how much closure and post-closure we have to have.
Right.
And that's in that letter, and uh we, we have to get that information. Thanks for getting that, Alice. I suspect that um. My gut feeling is I bet we can use some of that closure funds, maybe not all of it, but some of it.
I would assume we could use some of it.
If it's made to cover the whole landfill, a portion should be for those.
Should already be set, yeah, for that cell.
Does that make sense, Jean?
I, I, yeah. I'm trying to run that, yeah. I think to cap that, we could probably use some.
And we still gotta do a solvency.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Part of that solvency is, we, the way it appears, we need to raise our fees. It just looks that we don't have anything in reserve for whatever comes up, we're barely scraping by. And we all. The public support that. At what point do they say enough?
Well, if, the other thing is, what would it cost us to take it somewhere else?
Exactly.
Right.
You know, so, if we're at thirty, let's say we're at thirty-five and you gotta take it to Bismarck and it's forty-two, which you got eighty miles of transport.
With the fuel prices right now?
With the fuel prices.
But we should be able to raise our fees then.
I'm gonna pick on that, the words you used there a little bit. What it's gonna cost us, it's gonna cost the taxpayers indirectly, like the cities and the hall there.
Which we are.
Not we as a county. We will have our own, right.
As county residents.
Yes.
That's we I'm using.
We as the county, everybody.
Yeah.
The cities would really be hurt, cause they, they have their budget made already, at the regular fees that we have now. Know that, right Travis?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they would have finalized their budgets a week or two ago, most cities would have.
But I do know, even at one of the last. Meetings we had about our fees, we were like.
We were substantially lower.
Quite low compared to other landfills and I, can I use the word privately-owned landfills? Uh, is that what they are? Most, most of these landfills?
I think Porton County was one of them she was talking about, I think.
Anyway, their fees were, um, some of them are substantially higher.
Other enterprise funds, that's what they're called.
There you go, okay. So, yeah, I, I think we have to, a- a- at one point, we may have to up our um fees quite a bit, and if that means uh. I mean, that could indirectly say, well, there'll be less revenue, cause less will get hauled there, I don't know.
Anyhow, to go forward, as you said, we're gonna have to find out how much we can use on the capture fund, or to recap that. Or else we'll be here all day and we're still sitting at the landfill.
Right, yeah.
So.
Well, what I'm saying is, we could take out, I mean, we could leave within the budget, cause this is a preliminary, we can always go down. If we find those answers out prior to the final, that would be definitely the area we could cut. But the thing with uh, if you are pulling in money through an SRF loan, that's a non-taxable, that's a non. Budgetary type, cause it's essentially coming in, going out, but then you have to repay that loan, so you have to budget for the repayment. But you don't have to have all that money in there within this year or within twenty-three. Um, and I mean, I'm, I'm not necessarily a pro loan person, I mean, it's nice to pay things, but. When you have the ability to take care of the projects you need to do and not screw up your budget.
Could we do a loan against us? Say like?
Um, that would have to, we'd have to talk to SRF folks, but I've seen it done before. But generally, you go through the state's revenue. And the thing is, is that through SRF, you take out a bond through the state. Um, the other aspect is essentially, um, our, our cash reserves become the entity that does it. It, it's been done, but it's not very common.
Yeah.
Um, and it takes on an administrative role I don't know if we're comfortable with.
I, I would really prefer to see if we can at all make it, that it's just through the landfill, so that we can have the landfill self-sufficient. Knowing that we're gonna have other projects to, you know, and making sure.
Right.
So I think it would be best if we can just keep that separate.
You mentioned other reserves there Travis, what reserves are you referring to?
Well, I mean, we get a report every month that shows we got between eight and ten million dollars in the bank, that's a reserve.
That's taxpayer money, that's not.
Correct, but you, what Samantha was, and this is, I'm not trying to put words in her mouth, but if. We were the entity that, um, the county that loaned the money to the landfill and then they repaid back. The county with interest, that's what I'm saying, it, it has been done, but it's not a common practice.
Okay, thanks. We have to be co-pay, or the co-signature of the.
Right, we'd essentially be the, the bank in the instance of this. Uh, the county would borrow the money to the landfill with a return on that investment. And like I said, it has been done, but I'm not necessarily comfortable and know all the ins and outs of that. It could be something we look at, but it's definitely cleaner and keeps uh separations of duties better if you use an outside entity.
Right.
So it looks like we've raised uh.
There she come.
Probably a few more questions than we have answered ourselves, cause what I got. Kinda gathered together here is, um, we need to find out how, the amount of funds that we can take out of that eighty forty-nine and that eighty fifty. Uh, review our fees, SRF funding, and a solvency study.
Right, which wouldn't necessarily have to be done prior to accepting the preliminary budget. You just know that it can be done before we do the final budget, and even if it isn't done then, there's always the budget amendment process throughout the year.
Candy, can I ask a favor? Would you mind coming up to the ta- table? We've got some questions for you, or at least I do. Please. Where Jean stated it very well, we've got at least three questions. One of the other questions, how long until we're out of compliance? How long do we have until we have to have it capped?
How long do we have?
Yes.
I would have to talk to the state about that, but there is something in there for your, the garbage that's open? Like if we're not in there, we're supposed to have it completely covered or whatever, but with the extra cells in there. And I will have to call the state on that.
Okay, the reason. Finding enough sufficient funds to do the capping is, is our challenge right now. It's really hard. Cause we're not even certain that we can use ARPA funds. So that's what we're deliberating about right now.
Okay.
We, I'll, I'll repeat Jean's questions, one, I'll add a couple though. Can we use ARPA funds? We don't know that. We really are reluctant to, because that's dedicated someplace else. How much, if any, can come out of closure funds? You know, you have your closure and your post-closure funds, and being this is part of the landfill, we may be able to use some of those funds. But we have to check with the state on that, cause we have to have a certain amount left in there.
There is on the post-closure funds, you cannot touch that money, nobody can touch it.
Yeah, per, per the independent auditor, and both of them, the one from prior and the one that we just got done doing. The closure funds are not operational fund, we have to, we have a certain amount in there, if something would happen so that we could close the landfill.
Yes, and that money has to stay there, and that's what it's for.
Right.
It's not for capping or any day-to-day.
Yeah, well, that, yeah.
And we can't borrow it even under a, what, you know, if I had a machine go down, I can't borrow it and pay it back. You cannot touch it in the rules.
The other one is, uh, you asked that question already, is how long do we have to make up our, our minds on how we're going to resolve this? Until we become out of compliance?
I will, I will have to get, I will get a hold of the state and find out.
And the final question I threw on the table is that, being this is a non-county tax revenue type business. I'm not sure that we have to have this budget done by August tenth. We might be able, if we can, we might be able to solve this in two weeks if we got this, all this information back. I don't know that.
I think we have to approve it under the preliminary. I, my, I, my thought is we should have it approved under the preliminary. But if we find between the preliminary and the final, that we have to make adjustments, and we know what we can do.
But I'm reading under the century code, everything that I'm reading here does say for each fund.
Okay, whether it's, yeah.
Whether it's.
Either sub- subdivision or no subdivision or however, right now.
So, back to.
Okay, let's just assume that.
Yeah, so back to one of Marv's questions, we can't touch the post-closure, but we can touch the operational closure.
Maybe, I don't think you can.
Yes, yes you can.
You, you can, but you have to have a reserve in that.
The operational was, because it, there was years that the post-closure funds, that money was going in there, but there was not money being put in that operational fund. And that operational fund was supposed to be a deal to continue on with, you know, you get so far, it was supposed to get capped. You know, like cell one should have been capped probably before I started working there. But it wasn't done, it just got.
Pushed out.
But they're getting pickier, the state's getting a lot pickier on everything now, but, I mean, it should have been, and then that's why the costs got way out of. Line, because the costs way back then were way low, compared to when we did do the capping, they probably quadrupled in price. So there was, the money wasn't really there. You know, what I mean?
That's, that's part of our question, is that's, being it's part of the closure, we can use some of the closure funds to do it, and that's, that sounds logical.
Operational closure.
Yeah, the operational closure and.
Which one is that Candy?
Eighty forty-nine.
Yeah, I think that's the forty-nine one.
It's the forty-nine one?
Yes.
One ninety-six. Is that what you see Candy?
It's, yeah, well, it's nine, nine eighteen. And see, that's the one, we finally, we started putting money in there, what, two years ago? And then see that, the payments to the phase, the phase closer fund, that's the stuff with the insurance. Cause once you cap it, like the ones we capped, you. Because once you cap it, like the ones we capped, you have to have insurance on that for, I think it's fifteen years after you cap it in case something comes up in the wells.
Yep.
Is the purpose for this, and then after the fifteen years, I think it gets dropped on them, those part of shelves.
To the next one.
Yeah, and then it'll go into the next and just keeps turning, but we brought that all up to date last year. We got that money where it was supposed to be sitting. Last year. So the money got flipped from the operational, and now we've been putting in, you know, thirty to sixty thousand dollars in the operational. To be able to put money away for the closing of the cells and stuff.
Okay.
And like with the inert, I don't think they would, they would prefer, I don't think they will tag us on the inert, because it's still gonna take a while. To get there, but, uh, but the MSW might be a thing. And you know, maybe we can even get by with capping one, you know, capping cell four and not, because we're not done with five. Completely done, so if we cap part of it.
You can cap part of which one, which cell?
Four.
Cell four.
So one and two are already capped?
One, two and three, I think are capped, or one, two and three and a half are, are, yeah, three and a half are capped.
Alright, so we're looking at.
And so if we went into four, like that map I showed you, if we went up to that next road or next approach we have.
Where it goes around that curve?
Yeah, well, yeah, we wouldn't go all the way, yeah, just right before the curve.
Okay.
You know, maybe we can get by, I guess I can, I'll call and find out, but.
Okay, let me ask, uh, real. Generic, so we have, we're done with cell one, we don't need to do anything to cell one?
Nope.
It's just got insurance on it.
Because see what it is, it's, it's capped on the south side, and at the top of it where the capping ends. The cell six and seven will adhere to that garbage on that side, and it's gonna go higher.
So we're not done with cell one?
Well, yeah, cell one is technically done because.
Okay, so we don't, we don't need any funds?
And.
So if cells one and two, we don't need any funds for?
Uh, the only thing would be is if it got washed out, I mean, there's maintenance. But right now, the grass is growing, you know, it's, it's looking good, the state's happy with how it's come along.
Okay.
Okay, good.
So as long as, you know, we gotta, we should do a little bit more with the weeds, but as long as we don't have any washouts or. Anything like that, that would be the only maintenance.
So right now, we got a cap cell?
Four.
Okay.
And cell three you're still using?
Huh?
Cell three you are still using?
Three and four, or four and, four and five, there's some stuff I gotta put in for, to fill in some areas on that map. Which we did do some of it.
So if we. So if we cap cell four, that's what is the three point five five acres? Or is that the total?
That might be part of five too, might be, I would have to look.
So where are we on cell three?
I believe three is probably capped, one, two and three.
So we gotta cap cell four and part of five?
Yes.
Why only part of five?
Because it's not finished yet, we have to put more garbage in there.
Oh.
But as this time, we have got to get, we have got to get at least two feet of garbage on top of this liner.
Okay, gotcha.
Two frosts to do it, so we have to be over that.
You're supposed to be covering it as you, so to speak, not daily, but you're supposed to be covering it as you're filling it.
Yes, there's supposed to be actually six inches of dirt on the garbage. Every day, well, you push.
Okay.
And that, and then, and then like say, okay, we do that stuff and we move back to cell five, there shouldn't be any garbage showing in that liner when we move over there.
Okay.
By the rules, and it's hard to do because if it rains or the wind or that, it open, I mean, it opens the garbage again. And they do.
I just need to try to understand where we are for the budget or the expenses and. That, that's why I'm asking those questions, real, real basic.
Make some phone, if I did, if I would add more of a heads up, I'd have come with this information.
You're doing fine.
We just started talking about it right now, Candy, trying to, we just started trying to figure it out right now, so.
Yeah, I didn't know, but I will, I will call on this and see what the time limit is and. And, and how much we could get by with.
As an administrator, just a what-if question, if we had to raise our fees. What would be a practical amount that you feel that the public would still support?
Ooh, I have no idea on that, and actually, until the end of the year, I'm not gonna see what the difference is on what, um. On what was from last year to this year till the end of the year. And like summertime, we're busy, we're really busy now, we've had up to forty-five people in one day.
That tells me we.
And, you know, and a lot of, and then we got, we're getting buildings in from Twin Buttes and.
Really?
Yeah, it's good material to work with.
Either we're, um, too cheap or, uh.
No, what it was is their hauling distance. It was an hour to come to me and where they were going before was three-hour round trip and they wanted to finish it that day. So that's why they switched over.
Okay.
And then if I were, if we were to raise them again, we would have to, some hour or another, I'd like to do the paperwork at the end of the year and look at it and see. And then probably check with Sherwin and the state or whatever and what they think on it, and then we would have to probably put it in there, um, like. Before July of next year, like, or May, send out a letter to all the cities and everybody to inform them that we're raising our rates. Before, prior to them doing their budget, instead of blindsiding them.
Yeah, so you're saying that we'd have a, a letter out to the communities.
By May.
By four twenty-four's rates.
Yeah, that way we'll get raised in January again.
That makes a lot of sense.
Just so you're not, I mean, it's just, it's more of a courtesy, I guess, a guy can do it, but it's more of a courtesy when they, well, you can see how fun the budget is.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Without having.
Thank you, I agree. Um, that exact question has been sent to talk to be specifically answered.
Okay.
As I was telling Marvin, I, I hate to talk behind the scenes here is, I, I do have. Big problems using taxpayers' money to, uh, fu- to fund the, um. Landfill when the landfill is supposed to be an entity all on its own, it's supposed to support itself, that, that's what I was telling Marvin, I hate. I hate doing that, I mean, I, we, we'll probably end up having to borrow money or, not we, the landfill will probably end up having to borrow money to. Pay for some of this, and then we need to figure, figure out how it's gonna pay for itself, which I'm.
Yeah, which we are getting on that page when, um, I guess.
But as, as, um, Travis is saying, we need to have, we need to plug some numbers in here for, for, it's gotta be done. But I don't know how we're gonna do that.
Well, it's gonna be in the budget, but it's not gonna affect our taxation because it's a non-taxable.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Um, where the revenue comes from is yet to be determined.
Okay.
Something will work out.
So we should plug it into her budget with the negative, with it being in the negative, and we can approve that. But then we're gonna have to go in there, we're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna get the money to fund it.
Right.
Right.
And, and that's why I brought up the SRF, because that is a viable solution.
Now, should I put it in for the full two fifty or just that MSW of the one forty-two?
I would put in one forty-five.
For the MSW, yeah.
The three point five five acres is.
Oh, okay.
Hundred and forty-two, I'd make it rounded up to hundred and forty-five, nothing ever comes out that close. And you'd add that to miscellaneous revenue?
I would add that under her expenditure, because we don't have any revenue yet, because we're trying to figure out where we're gonna get that.
Well, we have to put something there to try to cover it, so we're not.
You don't happen to know what cash on hand I even have right now, I have no idea.
In your, in your actual budget?
Well, not in my actual budget, actually, that's in the bank or in the.
Their actual, their actual account.
I got it to, I got it to July one.
But that's just on the, that's just the bu- or, and that's actual what's in there?
Uh, as of July, as of July one, yes.
As of August first, I've used, we've used forty percent of our budget as of August first. And we have four months to go, so hopefully I can keep it down.
Employees, yeah.
Yeah.
You have to pay your employees.
Yeah, that, yeah, that still has to come out of there, I mean, for the rest of the year and stuff, and hopefully we.
Cash on hand, July one. One ninety-eight, four sixty-two.
Four fifty-two?
Four six two, one nine eight, four six two.
So it's almost, almost what?
It's real close to two hundred thousand.
So we're gonna put that under payments to contractors for expenditure. I'm gonna keep for twenty-five thousand because you still have to pay for like, um.
Well, yeah, well, actually, they just showed up this morning, they're testing the wells today.
One forty-five and twenty-five.
Where are you getting your numbers there? Oh, you're looking at twenty-twenty-two's numbers.
Well, from her original budget from twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, she usually keeps about twenty-five thousand in there for payments to contractors. But if we're gonna add for the MSW. She's gonna need payments, you know, more payments to other contractors for other projects that she has up there with her metal. What else do you have on it there?
Well, payments to contractors, it, it's mostly like, um, well, if I have somebody, um. Well, like they gotta do the scale, they automatically come every year and calibrate the scale, and then the water thing is either. Three thousand or five thousand, it depends if they're testing for heavy metals.
Right, so she needs those funds on top.
And that comes out of there.
Project funds.
But I see that in your estimated revenues for twenty-twenty-three, you have two hundred and eighty thousand in there.
I'm not putting this under revenue, I'm putting this under expenditure.
Right.
Well, it's under expenditure.
Under expenditures, you have two eighty. That, that.
For payments to contractors?
Yes.
Oh, right, you guys are looking at that one, I'm sorry, I've got two open here, the one that I was.
You're looking at the new one, Sam?
Yeah. So, yeah, that was including the, the total amount.
But like the, the capping could come out of the operational fund, that's what that is there for. The capping.
Uh, we don't disagree.
Right.
What we have to check is because of the state, we have to maintain a certain amount in there for the other cells. So how much we can use and how much we can't use, that's what we have to find out.
Can we use the hundred and ninety-six thousand today? That's what we're looking at.
Yep.
We just wanna check to make sure that we have the amount left in there that's supposed to stay in there per the state.
No, that's supposed, that's the phase closer one, that one has to stay in there.
Yeah, we can't touch it, but is there a certain percentage we have to keep in the operational one?
No, the money should, there, no, but there, I, no, I don't believe so, I, there, but there should be money. Put in there all the time to, for future projects.
We agree with that.
I don't think there's a, I don't think there is a limit. Because there, there, for years, there was never any money going in that, not a nickel.
We, we agree with that Candy.
And so it's like, well, we have to start, and so that money should have been turning over in there for the last two or three years or more.
We, we, we're not disagreeing with you Candy, but what we're saying is, today, you have a hundred and ninety thousand dollar bill that has to be paid. Can we use a hundred and ninety out of that hundred and ninety-six today? Or do we have to leave some in there? That's where we're at.
Okay, and you're talking about the operational.
Be.
Yes, the operational.
Yes, under the operational, can we use all hundred and ninety-six today? We're not asking. If there should there be, we understand there should be. But do we have to leave ten percent, fifty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent of that hundred and ninety-six in there? That's.
That's correct.
Where we're at.
Okay, and you're, and you are just talking about the operational, not the phase closer.
No.
That money's gotta be up in two hundred and some thousand.
We understand that, we're only talking the operational closure, how much of that can we spend today?
Okay, and you're saying that this money that's in there, like my, my money on account, that's just, that's overall, that's what's in there?
Yes.
So, and that's what you're putting in, you, you got that number with the operational. Closure fund, or is that separate? Is that two things or?
You confused me there.
Yeah, your cash on hand?
Yeah, cash on hand.
That's separate from the operational closure.
Okay, so I do have a hun- you said a hundred and what?
Well, you.
In operational.
Hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Yeah, one ninety-eight, four sixty-two.
Okay.
Okay, that's what's in that, okay.
And your operational one, and we just need to know how much of that we can take out to apply toward this.
Okay.
That's all we need to know Candy.
If there is, okay.
If there has to be a certain percentage that remains in that account.
Yeah, I, I, actually, I don't believe there is, but I will find out because there was never money in there.
Right, yeah, but we just gotta.
We show an expense.
It probably should have been done before, like you said, so we just wanna make sure we follow things now, so that we don't drain you totally down or something too.
Yeah.
If we're supposed to leave something in there.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, because we are gonna be putting in. Another thirty thousand. Twenty-two. So there, there should be thirty thousand, which I don't believe is taken out of the budget yet.
Okay.
It usually happens towards the end of the budget season, but another thirty thousand should be going into that operational.
Yet this year.
Out of the budget this year, that isn't taken out right now, I don't believe.
So you, you believe there should be another thirty thousand in addition to the hundred and ninety-eight thousand?
Yeah, that should go in this year.
We understand that, 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 okay, we, we get it.
I believe because I, I don't know if anybody, usually Sean always did it towards the end of the year.
It was in the budget for twenty-twenty-two for thirty thousand.
Yeah, but it's not moved yet, right?
No, not, I haven't moved any funds.
Yeah.
This year, since I've come.
Okay, Samantha, I'm gonna back up here again. Payment to contractor was twenty-five thousand, we wanna leave at least that in there, and we have to add about a hundred and forty-five thousand for this cell. Five closure, that comes up to a hundred and seventy thousand, right now you have two hundred and eighty thousand in that column.
Correct, because she was requesting.
I understand, but the question is, do we want to reduce that two hundred and eighty thousand?
That's up to you guys.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking the board.
No, I, I get you Marvin, I, I understood you, oh, but.
Yeah.
But what is the difference on that, that's a hundred thousand dollars more?
She was requesting thirty thousand instead of the twenty-five.
Okay.
And I was adding both of the inert and MSW, I was just making it, showing you the total with the requested amount and a project. For both of the inert and.
And now we're just looking at the MSW.
And going back down to twenty-five thousand.
Okay. So the question I asked the board, what, so we move on and make some decisions here?
Right.
What do we wanna put in there for the twenty-twenty-three budget? You wanna leave it at two hundred and eighty, or do you wanna reduce it down to two hundred? Let's pick a number.
I'm not, not laughing because it's funny.
As I understand, uh, the budget, when you read the rules, and I think Samantha can confirm, is if we read the rules that were, were applied with, from the DACO. Uh, and even with this budget sheet, we have to show how our expenses are covered, so we may have to put in a number. For revenue, and then we can always reduce it later on, and then we reduce expenses likewise, so that's why I want a number for expenses. So we know how much to plug in for revenue. Both of those could be reduced.
Okay, even, even if we, um, reduce the payments contractor line a hundred thousand dollars. Are we still short money?
Yes.
I, I, the way I math I do, we are.
Yeah, well, if you look on the bottom, it's in the whole two hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
You're still short a hundred and twenty-eight.
So, yeah, so if we change that to one eighty, it still gives us, um, a negative balance of one twenty-five eighty-seven.
And then there's.
Is that without the inert?
With that's gonna be the bottom there.
But the, the thing is, is that under other miscellaneous revenue, you could put in SRF loan to bring up your revenues up.
Right, you guys wanna?
We could just phantom that at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for now.
And you're still probably gonna have a negative number if you're gonna use operational closing. Because in order to utilize that and have your budget reflected, you're gonna show a negative, because essentially you've prepaid. Because essentially, you've prepaid that into a fund, and to use it, you have to go in the hole.
So if we put that SRF loan, you guys said, what, one thirty?
I'd say like one thirty.
Then that puts us at a positive of one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars.
For operating at the beginning of twenty-twenty-three.
Correct, and that's not using any of the funds from the um.
Correct.
That's not from.
Correct, and we can adjust.
Okay, so we're reducing payment, we're reducing payments to contractors to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yep.
That reduces our balance down below to a hundred and twenty-eight, five forty-two. But we're gonna cover that a hundred and twenty-eight, five forty-two by adding possible funding of a hundred and thirty thousand on the revenue.
Correct.
Yes, and that, and understanding that we're doing that just to get a, a zero balance, so to speak. I know it's not exactly zero, but. And then, but our other revenue, we may have to adjust in our expenses. We may have to adjust at the next meeting.
In our final.
In the, yeah.
Okay, yes.
September twenty-fourth.
Yep.
And that could be from, you know, partial use of what we already have on the end from in our accounts.
In her operational.
Yes.
Yep, once we find out how much we can use of that.
We also have to determine, um, alluding to Marvin's um, research. He said on July first, we have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand cash on hand. We need to just look at that and see what that balance could be, where, where it would, where it needs to be to sustain operations out there at the landfill. In other words, we can't spend a hundred ninety-eight thousand of your cash on hand because then you're at zero.
You don't wanna be, yeah.
Right.
Right, we don't wanna make it so that you're backpedaling again.
We need to determine if you need to be at a hundred and ninety thousand or a hundred and fifty, a hundred thousand, fifty thousand. And make a determination from there as to paying some of this. Because back to, I, I know I'm beating, beating the drum here, is um, you, you, you're supposed to be a self-supporting entity. So we have to figure out how, where, where we need to be with those numbers.
Yeah, and, and it's never gonna be static because it's a living entity, essentially.
So yeah, you're, you can have motor go tomorrow, you know, and big expenditure, twenty thousand right there.
You wanna do, are we gonna do each one like that, or?
And then we're gonna do this one. Of course, she mentioned tons. It's all verifies on tons of how much business is going through the door.
Okay, Marvin's gonna make a motion here.
Okay, Marvin.
Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, I make a motion that we amend the proposed budget for, with these changes. Payment to contractors reduced to a hundred and eighty thousand. And add another miscellaneous revenue of a hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, motion, uh, motion, motion, motion by Marv, um, to reduce payment to contractor a hundred and eighty thousand and miscellaneous revenue of a hundred and thirty thousand. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? I'm gonna second that for discussion.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, do we need to make sure to say that it's for the landfill?
Oh.
Or not?
On the beginning of my refer, my motion, in reference to fund six zero zero one landfill.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Good point.
Good point. I, I understand why you weren't seconding them.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
The motion passes.
One more question, Sam. Do you have, after you put the wages, the insurance, and da-da-da, all into what I've put on here? Do you have a total amount for that, for what's in for twenty-twenty-three?
For your, what you're requesting for.
Well, yeah, requesting, and then with what was added on in the workman's comp and all of that stuff.
Cause she has to do her own work.
Total expenditures you're looking at for twenty-twenty-three is.
I know.
Five ninety-three, seven seventy-eight?
Well, yeah, five ninety-three, eight twenty-three.
Hmm.
Oy.
Oh, I see, you're using the other one, okay.
Yeah, the.
Yep.
Yeah.
My, my, my.
That's, yeah, with your project, five ninety-three, eight twenty-three.
Lot, I'm gonna start buying lottery tickets, I think, for landfill.
But you said that includes the project, right, Sam?
That includes the, the MSW project.
Yeah, that includes your MSW project.
I'm sure there's plenty of old tickets in your landfill.
Maybe I'll start selling tickets for a fundraiser.
Very awesome question. We're done with that. On the top of the sheet, it's called NFL landfill. I think that's supposed to be NLF.
Um, probably.
Non-levered funds to the National Football League.
No, National Football League.
It doesn't really matter, just sort of.
Yeah, no, I'll change it.
Humor deal.
And when are you doing the fi, when do you guys have to have the final in here? I will get on this.
Uh, September twenty-first is our final budget hearing. We have to have it in by October tenth, tenth of October.
You know what, Marv, I have NFL for all.
I know you do. I know you do. I saw that.
Yeah.
So we got Detroit.
Yeah, we got all, we got the league.
Even former towns.
You know it.
We good on that one?
I think so. I think we beat that one. It's official.
It was a good discussion though.
Thank you for being here, Candy.
Yeah, thank you, Candy.
Yeah, and I will, um, what, do you want me to, if I get this information, give it to you and you can wing it to them?
Yeah.
Yes.
That would be perfect.
An email or something?
And I apologize about the miscommunication this morning, so.
Yeah, it's Monday, you know.
Yes, all your, um, all your financials go, we're straight to Samantha, and then she gets it out to us.
Okay.
All this stuff, yes.
All right, I will, I will go, I will, I don't know if I'll get it all done today, there's stuff to do, but um, I will try to get it for the next couple of days and ship it to you.
Open by five this afternoon.
Five this afternoon?
No, 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 sorry.
I guess I could talk on the phone while I'm working.
Did you say it's five o'clock so much?
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah.
Thank you very much, Candy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Um, what, what subject do we wanna tackle next?
I think, well.
You guys wanna do the roads?
Either that or do Albus, I don't know.
The road's gonna take longer than ten minutes, I think, isn't it?
What are we gonna tell me up here?
We got Jim at ten thirty.
The road's gonna take more than ten minutes.
Yeah.
We got a ten thirty?
Let's, uh, Jim.
We got a new agenda?
Say, right, yeah. Uh, let's just go to library.
Paige?
I need to find it first. I'm just looking at accounting levies.
You know, I was gonna make an index, so I didn't have to look through this.
Can we first, can we say if we're gonna go by the brand new one, or we're going by the old one?
Let's just go by the old one, since that's where we started.
We're on the library with Paige.
Library is nineteen.
That makes a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's right in front of you.
Nineteen.
Samantha, I mean, Liza, I'm gonna ask the question I asked last year. What is the benefit, or is it cost-effective to continue the bookmobile?
I, I have the library.
I'd say, I don't know. I'm like, I'm not sure why it's coming to me, cause I don't have the library.
That, that question came up last year.
Um, their thought process is that, that bookmobile, it doesn't go to Bueller, Hazen, but it pretty much goes to every other community in the two counties. And that's essentially how they get um, various periodicals to, to all the residents within the two counties, is through the bookmobile. It's kinda one of those things where it costs money to use, um, maintenance, stuff like that.
But they have it.
But they have it.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I'm, just wanna say, we got a budget that's gotta be trimmed, and uh, we need to look at, I'll call them non-essential services that may need to be discontinued. Even though I personally feel that a benefit to the community for some of them, but we may have to.
But, but the thing with.
Just, just a note.
Yeah, the thing with the library, though, is it is a joint between us and McLean County, so.
Correct.
We can't make that decision wholly.
Right.
We'd have to make a recommendation to McLean County, and we both have to be in agreement for it to disappear.
What's our record, what's our expected cost of that? I don't see anything under expenditures there for the bookmobile.
Um, I don't think I have the libraries.
I used to know that, cause I was on the board for a while.
Mercer County, yeah, they just have, so they have it. Bookmobile for twenty-twenty-three proposed fifteen thousand.
What about the driver? Is that everything?
That's, it just says in parentheses, fuel, maintenance, and rent.
Fuel, maintenance, and?
Rent.
Rent.
Yeah, that's no driver.
There's no driver and no insurance.
Staff travel, fifteen hundred. I'm assuming that's where it comes from?
No, staff travels, the librarians.
That's more, or, or, you got it.
Three twenty-two, nine eighty-nine, a difference from last year of twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
So what was the total revenue they were requesting for Mercer County? Does it say?
Yeah, what's Mercer County's portion of the cost?
Uh, they are requesting.
Bookmobile, right?
And it's four mils, two hundred and eight thousand, three point five mils, a hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Okay.
But where is this? Where does this go?
So your estimated mils is based on their requested dollar amount?
Correct.
The discussion that we had last time, and I'm not trying to pick on anything, but I remember this even before last year, that with the insurance and the cost of maintaining the, the bookmobile, and then they brought in the amount of benefit that it may or may not be supporting or benefiting the communities. And like going to Golden Valley and different places and sitting there for an hour and maybe delivering a book and maybe not. So. So we're running ninety-eight thousand short. And the bookmobile is gonna cost us fifteen thousand, that's for just the fuel, maintenance, and rent. That does not include insurance on the vehicle or the driver. Didn't we have that book down for the driver, the bookmobile driver before? Thought there was a line item for that. I don't have that with me.
Uh, bookmobile driver librarian.
She got it in that one?
So we'll see else then.
So they have the current, they have a two percent, a two and a half percent, a three percent, and a seventy-five cent. Which one would you like the, you want just the current salary? Bookmobile driver librarian current salary is sixteen thirty-six. And that comes out to twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy a year.
For the driver?
Yeah, that's based on seven hundred and fifty hours.
So the driver gets, see that number twelve what?
Twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy yearly. And that's all the, based off the seven hundred and fifty hours.
Thank you. Does anybody have just a rough guess, you guys, what insurance would be for that bookmobile? I'm not familiar with.
My assumption is it would be included in their budget. I don't know why it would be separated out and not included. Is it something they pay all the time? I just don't know if they have an actual line item for it.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking. I'm trying to get the total cost of the bookmobile, is all I'm trying to get to. So far, we're at twenty-seven thousand. We're almost at a third of what we need to cut to school. Unless you guys have another place to cut.
Well, the thing, like I mentioned before, this is a joint between two counties. You'd have to talk to McLean, and I just don't think that's gonna happen in time for preliminary budget.
McLean County's gonna be doing their budget also.
Right, but what I'm saying is that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if we call McLean County today and tell them we are no longer gonna support funding the bookmobile, then they could make their adjustments also. Yes, no? I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, at the final. I don't know if McLean County's already approved their preliminary.
Okay. Well, but they'd be in the same, same situation. They're, they're preliminary, they can make adjustments, yeah, like we could. I'm not saying. I'm not right now saying we need to cut it out. I'm just saying we could.
What's, what's the commissioner's name that's on the library board?
Uh, Barry.
Barry, okay, I know him. Anybody have a McLean County book? I can call?
Well, the thing is, is when you get to Jim here.
He can't make a decision on his own.
No, the only question I wanted to ask him was, if we did this, what would be your feelings on it? Cause he might say, he might fill in all the gaps in information, absolutely, we don't want to. It does a big service. He would eliminate the question.
Well, I mean, sitting with the board, it was.
But I don't know, it's, you got a board of directors there. It should be the board's decision. It shouldn't, I don't think we can do it here. I mean, that's why they got a board of directors there.
Yeah, the library board was in support of it.
Yeah.
And the other thing on the library to take into consideration is, they get.
What all do we fund?
They get state aid.
State aid.
Yeah, they get state aid if we maintain the mill levies. If we don't, then they lose out fifty thousand a year in state aid. So if you cut out fifty thousand of the bookmobile and then reduce their budget, then they lose another fifty thousand in state aid.
So that's a hundred thousand.
So then all of a sudden, you cut, it's a double whammy.
Yeah.
So.
What cities does the library support?
No, not just the bookmobile, this, this funny.
Yeah. The bookmobile, uh, would be Big City, Golden Valley, Zap, Stanton, Turtle Lake, Max, Garrison, um, Washburn.
Center.
No, that's Oliver County.
Yeah, but they go down to that school district.
This has member life of those, member librarians.
That school district.
Yeah.
Travis, they go down to.
Yeah, I guess I don't know if they do center or not.
They, they, they had a contract, or they used to, between center and, and the regional.
Then you got Underwood.
Yeah, Underwood, Washburn.
No, probably not Benedict.
Do they use the bookmobile to move books from one library to the other, like bringing books down to Hazen or Buella and then transporting them the other way?
Probably not with that.
We, we used to do it that way, but I don't know what they did today, you know, that they, but we used to transport them.
I mean, they move, they revolve books all over, right?
Right, yeah.
Buella will request, do you have it? Who has it? And then.
Right.
When can I get it? And then they move it down there.
Then they move it around.
What libraries does this fund fund?
So this has member librarians on their proposed salaries, and it includes Buella, Hazen, Garrison, Turtle Lake, Max, Stanton, Underwood, Washburn.
Right. Yeah.
Is what they have listed.
These sup, these supplements.
Buella.
Got it.
Hazen.
Yep.
Garrison.
Yep.
Turtle Lake.
Yep.
Max.
Yep.
Stanton, Underwood, Washburn.
And then the headquarters is in Riverdale.
And headquarters, Riverdale, yeah.
And so this budgeted amount is a portion of the total cost because, right, the two counties.
Right, and, and out of, out of this library fund, they pick up portions of all those entities that she just listed.
Yeah.
They pick up a portion of their salaries.
Portion of their salaries, right.
So the cities um, do a portion of it, and the county does a portion of it.
Okay.
So, let's uh, let's table the public hearing and bring up Jim here, since it's ten thirty.
I know we got his report for, or his packet. He went through it at that last.
This was um, from the last meeting we had. We made the decision on one type of flooring, but we didn't discuss the rest of them, because we were wondering what we had left in budgets and what we could do in twenty-two.
So we approved to do the dispatch area.
We approved to do the dispatch area and then we were debating on whether we do any of those else that's on that sheet. And basically, the quote would expire by the next time we had a regular meeting, that's why I answered on this one.
Oh, I see, okay.
Um, did you find out your hard numbers on everything that you got left to spend? I know there were some questions.
These were hard numbers.
No, 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 the budget. Like if we did a certain number of them? Because I think that was the, um.
Yeah, there's, there's, it, I, it just depends on how much you want to do on that portion. Like I said, there's eighty thousand dollars in the, in that line item for building improvements. And if you minus the sewer pump project, which you approved already, that was thirty-three thousand, nine thirty. That leaves us forty-six, forty-six thousand and seventy dollars in that line. And then I had broken it down, um, if you want to do one through three on that proposal.
How much was number one? Were you approved that already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy-seven hundred or something like that?
It was about seventy-five hundred dollars. Now two, I did find out, I asked for the, as you can see, the travel per diem to be determined. And I did get numbers on that too, just so you're aware, I didn't make copies because I didn't know. But, uh, he's got numbers that will not exceed for each line item for travel and all that, so. And number one, that come in at four hundred and ninety dollars for just number one.
As in addition to the seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, it was, well, sixty-eight, seventy-nine plus seven hundred. I don't know, you got a calculator up there.
Yeah. We, we just may, need to make a decision whether we're going to do any other of those projects or just the one.
And I, I didn't send this to him because I, I've been gone from work the last couple of days after the meeting and, and, uh, with carpeting and such, it usually if, if you make an order, it's better to make one order at one time.
Yeah.
Because then you get the same run and the same color on that run of carpet, so I kind of didn't. Uh, did you fax this to them or not? Okay, so they got it. I just haven't talked to Joe yet, so.
Okay.
Mister Chairman and fellow board members, speaking for Marvin and only me myself, I suggest that we stay with what we've already approved and not approve anything other until we get our budget done. If by chance, in our budget process, we decide not to put as much money into the building fund, it might be a way to help us with our revenue concerns.
But this is.
For twenty twenty-three, I'm not understanding. For twenty twenty-three, we would have a balance left of about thirty-eight, five. And we might not, next year we could still do these projects. We don't add money to it, so I guess that's, I'm in favor of just using, doing the one project that we've already approved. That's just my opinion.
So I'll ask this question, if it's in his maintenance fund, is that a clearing fund or is that a fund that rolls over from year to year?
Well, that's just what you guys approved for twenty twenty-two, so I would assume whatever he's requesting for twenty twenty-three is in his budget.
So it, what I'm saying is it's not one of those funds that accumulates, it's a fund that.
Yeah, there is a building fund.
There is that fund, correct.
Yes.
But this is not on that line item.
No.
Right.
So this is a one-time thing. If it's not done in twenty-two, it doesn't roll over into twenty-three.
What's that fund number?
I, that I don't know.
The reason I was asking that, I don't have it with me, but I did send a letter to the state and he sent, he sent back a list of all the funds that were restricted to, but to answer your question, sorry. I don't have that with me today. I do know that though.
Right.
And I know the, uh, where's that, the line item?
There's no rush.
The four thirty-eight, future billing improvements, that's the money that goes into the building fund each year. And there's like twenty-five thousand in the, this year's budget to go into there.
And that's what we were before saving for your HVAC, right?
What's that?
That was like before when we were trying to save up for your HVAC?
Yeah, well, it's just a building fund that can be used for.
Improvements that go towards the building, so this could even go towards like his boilers, you know, that he's requesting for next year. So that one does, we move that into, um, another fund each year, that twenty-five thousand. Right, so that can be moved, but this one that he currently has cannot. Under the building maintenance. That's just this one time year, one use.
What's that?
That's just budgeted for each year. For each use. Right.
There's twenty-five thousand in this.
So that doesn't necessarily roll to your next year.
No, it.
Right?
It's supposed to be, from what I understand, it was taken out of this line item and put into the building fund each year. That was my understanding how past auditors did it.
That's the twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Yep. But the building maintenance and the building improvements lines, those are just budgeted and those are not rolled over?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we don't spend it, it just disappears, it just doesn't get spent, or spent. However, whatever we, um, brought in for revenue on tax side, I mean, it's still in our coffers, it's just not, yeah. It's just not independent of these type of projects.
It's not money set aside.
Correct. It, it's not one of those funds that rolls over.
Right, that we could utilize for next year to build up.
Correct.
Can we discuss other current issues, beans, we got building maintenance issues on there at this meeting?
Yeah, it's labeled as maintenance issues, so any maintenance type stuff we can talk about.
Going to run a couple of other items past you. I know I, we had discussion, or I sent, called Travis about this fire pump issue. That was around, it was over six thousand to fix that. And it's not done yet. They got the jockey pump, we're waiting on a check valve. Getting parts is just like, it's unbelievably difficult these days. Last week I had issues with the, it's called a crack cooler unit. It's the air conditioning unit for the security electronic room and the server room. It's our most important rooms in the building. It's, that's where all the door lock controls and all the computer equipment, the server is in there. That unit went down, it wasn't cooling properly. And, uh, tech came from City Air and, uh, expansion valve is bad. And of course, on this specialized unit, it has to be one specific expansion valve. And I just talked to the tech and he told me the factory said it's like six months out.
Jesus Christ.
And this is the only unit that cools this room. So what we did is I had them bring up, they got, what they, it's a portable cooler. It runs off water, we've got that running in there to cool both rooms right now. But right now we're renting this cooler to the, I don't know what the exact price is, I know they said beans, we've got work doing, that we're doing with this other project, they're giving us a break, so I had heard probably fifty bucks a day. So I talked with that guy and he's said, if he, if we want it, he's going to look at a price on if we'd want to purchase our own, so we have it for future. Because I, I was just astonished that this, it, it's a common piece, but it's a specific valve that is for that and they designed it that way and it's, they can't even cross it to another one, so.
Well, based on that, I don't know whether we can do anything else.
Yeah, you have to save that money for.
And I do have, you know, something like that as a building maintenance thing and I had, as of the August first sheet, I got sixty-eight thousand in there yet, so. I just wanted to get you guys up to speed on everything that's happening.
Yeah.
Things have come up and it's just.
My thought process is based on that, that's a huge unknown on maintenance costs, I don't think we can approve anything else.
Actually, we can't, and my, I agree with you. In, in answer to your other question, if these funds roll back into the general fund, great. Because our general fund is short of money. We should not be expending any more than we need until we get that balanced.
So.
Okay.
Well, we approve the one, which I think we all agree that it needs to happen.
Yeah.
Stick with that?
I think we're just going to have to stick with that.
Okay.
Just stick with that.
And then I will keep you updated on this other issues, I'll probably come in the next meeting and see about a portable unit or where we're at on that, but I didn't have any choice but to.
Well, we.
We got.
Well, you have to keep it.
It runs the whole building.
You have to keep that server and keep that room cool, so, yeah, had no choice.
Lucky it hasn't been hot all right.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thanks.
Can we exalt that into the rest of the building in December, January, February?
Yeah, yeah, store.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, let's, uh, let's go back to the preliminary budget, do you need a break? Okay, let's take a break to ten fifty. Recession.
Calling your name, huh?
Screaming now.
Was anybody else caught in that traffic jam today?
Yeah. Travis and I, we're.
At least a half, I worry about.
Bring back in session. Uh, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, it's ten fifty, reconvening the preliminary budget hearing. Um, let's go back to the library.
Okay.
Because we were talking about that one before we adjourned. So what I'm hearing is some people are concerned with the bookmobile. That would be a question we could ask McLean County and if they're in support of it, the library board's in sort, support of it, then that could be something taken out of the fi, final budget, I just don't know if we could plan for it in the preliminary budget, just because of outside entities have to be involved.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has a different thought on that, but. Any other questions on the library fund?
I guess I would like to have a itemized list of expenditures. Right now it's just a lump sum, that don't work good.
Yeah.
When I went through Shanna's twenty twenty-two, she didn't have any breakdown of expenditures for the other county levies, so that's why I didn't put everything in there.
Mm-hmm.
Why did our, um, revenue in twenty twenty-one was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so I have fifty-three thousand for twenty-three?
Where are you talking?
Two hundred and fifty-nine compared to two thirty-four?
Two fifty-nine compared to fifty-three.
Oh, that's because that includes the property tax, and that's what we're levying. You see here, property tax. Then if you add levy for the property tax, that'll bring you to, what are we asking? Twenty-four mills?
Four mills, yeah.
Three point zero seven.
What was, um, our estimated taxable valuation in twenty-one?
For twenty-one?
Well, it would have been for our twenty-two budget. Because if you look at the top of the page, you got the max mill levy limit, and then the next thing you estimate a taxable value. Depending on how that changed, that changes the mill.
Fifty-two, three thirty-three.
Right, yeah.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, three thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay.
Went down a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions on the library? If not, let's move to the road department.
To answer, uh, Gene's question, if we include the mill that we're requesting, it's two sixty-seven in revenue. Two sixty-seven, six twenty-three. That's including all this other revenue in there, but the three point zero seven comes out to two thirty. They're all going to read it like that too.
If we do a three point four seven in mills, that's two.
Three point zero seven for the library?
That's what's proposed?
Right.
That gives us two sixty-seven?
The mill is two thirteen, eight eighty-three, including the fifty-three, seven forty and other revenue, it's the two, total of the two sixty-seven. Does that make sense?
I want just the mill amount, just the, um, general pop, property taxable.
Two thirteen, eight eighty-three.
And adds up to three zero seven.
Correct.
And on the library, um, our mill has to match McLean's mill.
Correct.
Right.
Which Ben and I have been already talked about, she said just get all the other ones, we.
Thank you. Okay.
Thought I'd save you some time, it's all done already.
Okay, any other questions on the library? Okay, what, what pages, we start with the roads?
Okay, we're going to start with, uh, page fifty-three and fifty-four. Samantha, I did a bunch of homework on this, do you mind if I walk through it and see what I did?
Yeah.
Because I think I got our mills down to where we can afford them. Okay? First thing I want you guys to look at is this brown sheet. This came from our engineer. These are the projects that they kind of proposed to do. So that's basically, it's wow, that's great. The next sheet that I want you to look at is this one right here. This is the one that we budgeted, that we thought we should do. And this is from Ken. And I got some numbers I'll walk through there with you a little bit on there, but, uh, Gene made a really good comment the last time he's here, he says, Martin, you got to make a budget that tells me what the total cost is and what revenue we know we have, not what we think we can get. So that's what I asked Ken to do and that's what he sent me, Samantha. And I think I can improve on that. What Ken suggested, the projects we do are those first four in the blue. And there's your contractor costs and over on the right, you have your engineering costs. Okay, we have in state aid funds, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. Now, I don't have the one sheet, I totaled, I totaled eighty-five, that ten, the two eighty-five. Oh, yeah, I got it right here, I got it down, it's penciled on here. Okay, that comes out to four, four oh five thousand. Uh, just a second. Anyhow, if you total up those four contractor costs, minus the five seventy-six that we know we have, our construction costs are thirty-one seventy-four. And if you go to your budget, Samantha, payments to contractors, we can reduce that thirty-eight forty to thirty-one seventy-four. Now, these are all going to have to be reviewed, but I did quite a bit of time on. Now, if you go to the engineering costs, we're, uh, right now we're on, we're on this sheet, one we're, this is the sheet that he sent us, the road department sent Shannon. Or Samantha, sorry.
That's all right.
No, it's not. I beg your pardon. Okay, if you go to the engineering costs, it shows the total cost, and then if you take out the eighty-one seventy, two seventy-two, it comes out to four ninety-eight, seven twenty-eight. So then on this sheet that Ken sent you again, uh, consultant fees, he had five hundred and sixty-five. I believe we can reduce that down to. I believe we can reduce that down to four ninety eight, seven twenty eight. When I get all done, I don't even know if we have to. It's gonna be a long walk, though, I'll walk you guys through this, so anyhow, that's what I did there. I'm gonna put these all aside, cause I'm not gonna look at them again. So now I'm going on township roads, which is on page fifty three and fifty four. And I did, uh, I'm not trying to disregard what was here before, but I did a lot of adjusting, trying to get these mill levies down to where we can handle them.
So did I.
Okay.
I'm interested to see what you have.
Okay, township roads. The first thing that I see on here, for twenty twenty two, we are budgeted to transfer two hundred and forty four thousand, three hundred and seventy eight. On your page fifty four, that is not shown. Transfers out for twenty twenty two, it's not there.
For the two what?
Two, for transfers out for twenty twenty two, we budgeted two hundred and forty four thousand, three hundred and seventy eight. It's not on that sheet, but I believe we need to do this, and the reason I'm telling you that is I'm looking at the trial balance for county road, or township roads, or county roads, we're at three hundred and eighty bucks. So the monies are gonna be transferred, so I wanna use that, put that money in there. So where it says transfers out, you might wanna pencil, if you had a pencil, anybody? Two forty four, three seventy eight. It's on page fifty four, right there, remember your pencils. That gives us a balance on December thirty first of two million, zero five one, nine seven eight. You take that two million, fifty one, nine seventy eight, it gets moved right over onto the twenty twenty three column, where it says balance, January one. You had twenty two ninety six, it gets changed to two zero five one, nine seven eight. Okay? That'll actually give us a total revenue of four million, one hundred and thirty eight, sixty nine, which is just a point of interest. So now I'm gonna go to the, the front sheet that township roads, the one at page fifty three. These are what I'm proposing that we, we do here. Change the budgeted transfer out to four million, one hundred thousand dollars. The reason I'm saying that is I showed you that our total revenue is four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine. It was suggested we do a three point four million, transfer it all out, we need it in the road department. And this, this is a, uh, it gets paid to us by the state every year. So let's just travel, transfer it all out. If we follow the rules that we made for our reserve funds, we're gonna have sufficient funds in reserve anyhow. So why just leave it in township, so let's transfer it out and try to get that, cause this money all gets rolled into the town, the county road fund, right? So this will reduce that levy amount that, which was way too high. Okay, so I'm saying that we're gonna transfer out four million, one hundred thousand. So line C would be four million, one hundred thousand. Line four is gonna be two million, zero five one, nine seven eight. That's the number that got corrected when we made that transfer.
Okay, wait, line C for total appropriations?
Cash and investments. Did I say line C? Well, it's line four.
Line number four.
Line four, why did I say C? I must have been.
You said C earlier.
For the four point one million.
Yeah, yeah.
One C for, four million, one hundred.
Even when I plug in your transfer, that I missed, the two forty four, three seventy eight, that still only appropriates three point four four one.
Let me, let me walk through it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, the total, total appropriation was four million, one hundred thousand, okay? All right, line four is two million, fifty one thousand, nine seventy eight. Our estimated revenue is two million, seventy eight, eight ninety one, that's, that's correct, you just put that in there. That gets moved down. So now if we add the two lines together, the two oh five one and the two oh seventy eight, it comes out to four million. This is line six, four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine. That gives us a fund balance of about three, thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine dollars left in there. So now we're gonna move four million dollars into the, into the township roads, I mean county roads versus three point three, so we've gained seven hundred thousand dollars there, almost. We did, which will really lower our levies a lot. There's no reason not to move it, that I can see.
Okay, but I, I'm sure I'm totally ignorant here, where did the four million come from?
It's a number, it, the, that came because we have a total revenue for twenty twenty three of four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine. Total revenue, when we add these here to, this here to get it.
So, and I wish that you guys could see the screen, but it, it is up to date now with, it kinda shows, I wonder if I can.
So it's those two, these two, this one and this one?
This one and this one.
Yep.
Four million, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine. So I left the one thirty in there, and transferred four point one million into the, we're gonna transfer that into the county road.
And Gene, he's getting that number from the House Bill fifteen oh five that we received into the township roads, and then what we transferred, that what we're transferring out?
Okay, now I'm gonna.
House Bill fifteen oh five?
Yeah, that was.
That was done in twenty twenty two, though. Okay.
Well, that's what's in there.
Yep, agreed, agreed. Now, one thing I wanna point out, we're gonna move up to the revenue on page fifty four. That number Samantha supplied, and the Daco says we're gonna get money from Prairie Dog. It's in that Nodaco deal. But I couldn't find their sheet, she says she has a worksheet that was county specific, and I could not find it. How did you reach that one ninety eight?
That's from the budget memo, the budget memo from Nodaco. They sent me a separate one with that, they sent me that breakdown, but then a specific one with our numbers.
I would like to see that, I could not fi- I checked all my emails, I could not find it.
The only thing that I'm worried about with the Prairie Dog funds, too, sorry, Mark.
What?
Um, uh, other auditors did not budget for those because they've been, the state has been saying that they've been, we're gonna send out those funds for a few years now. And we haven't received it yet.
And, yeah, but.
That's a huge, oh dear.
Yeah.
But Mark, uh, the other day, they had on the radio, now, of course, you don't believe everything, but they assured that the Prairie Dog fund was gonna be filled because of the, because of the oil, uh, you know, uh, price, yeah, the cap in, in.
This is from the Daco.
Oil companies had a, uh, pay in to the, into that fund, so. I know we hadn't gotten it in the past, I don't know if you wanna bank on it or not to bank on it.
Don't do that, either do it or don't.
But he, uh, that report was that the Prairie Dog fund was supposed to be filled. I don't know, did you catch anything?
I didn't catch anything, but what, how that works is those buckets would have been filled in twenty one and twenty two for payments in twenty three. Cause it would have been approved by the last legislature.
So we wouldn't actually get the payment until?
We'll get the payment in twenty three, but essentially, if they're saying those buckets are already full, then they will be having money.
That's what I was looking for.
You know, and then the reason we didn't get it before is because oil dropped so low in there.
It didn't trigger that price.
It didn't trigger, and they were able to, uh, do cities about half of what they promised, but counties got left off.
Okay, for our preliminary budget, do we wanna leave that number in there? I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a question.
So other auditors have said no, when I was, when Linda was helping me with this from, um, the Association of Counties, she was saying that it looks highly likely, no.
So if we don't have it in there, that doesn't, that changes our revenue side, but it doesn't necessarily change what we're requesting for a mill, does it?
Yeah, absolutely does.
Well, I mean.
Too many dollars worth.
But we are only allowed to pull so much, so like, if we pull our max and we don't get that, obviously, we don't do additional projects.
But then also with those Prairie Dog funds, if we do receive that, do you wanna use all of that in one year?
Well, the answer is yes, in order to get, so we can get by this year. You saw what the mills were in your letter that you sent out, we were way over on the mills.
Right.
In order to get that down to where we can manage our budget this year, it appears yes.
Unless we make cuts in the road department.
But all that cut does is it just pushes it down, further down the road.
That's how we got in this trouble.
Cause we kept, cause those projects don't disappear, they just get delayed.
And worse.
Yes, worse and more expensive, so.
But also, though, are we, why are we, I understand that Charlie is a benefit, but why are we paying, you know, that high of a wage for a contractor when it's like at the max, one hundred and twenty thousand, we have our own county engineer?
Because a typical county engineer manages projects, they don't do the design, plus you don't have survey with that, and there's a lot of other things, so. This, this topic's come up before.
Yeah.
Um, there's only a few counties that actually have an engineer on staff, and they're more of a management, they're not a design, um, person.
So we are leaning towards using all of our funds for the road?
Yes.
Yeah.
You want everything in there?
Well, when we walk through this, we'll see that.
All right.
If we, if we don't use the Prairie Dog, uh, revenue as a, as an estimated income, then we're gonna be short two point one million dolla, well, almost two point one million.
And if we don't get the Prairie Dog, and we do have it in our budget?
There're gonna be cuts.
Yep, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, there's no buts about it.
Which, and then if you cut projects, you cut engineering costs, because you don't do them. Um, speaking of Charlie, he did send me a text, uh, right when we were on recess, we have been approved for that eighty twenty, um, on the South Crossroad Bridge.
And I do have that in here, and that was roughly six hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, cause it would be eighty percent of that eight hundred and fifty thousand, and it should be eighty percent of the engineering costs, too.
And I added that on there.
Yeah, so, that, that's good news. He's like, I'm not sure if you need this or not for your budget, and I'm like, uh, yes, thank you.
So the whole six hundred thousand was in our budget, or you, you budgeted for the twenty percent?
I, well, I, I used the numbers for the expenditures that was sent to me from the road department.
Road department.
I threw in the revenue portion, possibly we were gonna get approved for the grant, which I estimated, when I, when we were having a meeting, it was said that it was gonna be roughly six hundred and eighty thousand.
So you've got that in her writing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So back to the, back to the Prairie Dog.
Yes.
Processes to have that in there, in our preliminary.
And cut it if we don't get it.
Essentially, yeah.
Right, cause we have, we can only go down, we can't go up.
And hopefully, we've gotten more firm, um, that we are or are not gonna get prior to our final budget.
I agree with that, I won't disagree with that, but we would have to make sure that our road department isn't, um, spending what we would approve as a budget prior to us getting that revenue in, you know what I mean?
That you have to follow their twenty twenty two budget, so they would not be.
Yeah.
They can't touch it right now.
They can't touch it now, it's not until the year goes over.
It won't be till January?
They can't, I see what Gene's saying.
What I'm saying is, even in our final budget that we will approve, we won't know that we're getting this Prairie Dog money until next year. We aren't receiving that this year, are we?
Correct, spring and next year.
Right, so we approved this budget estimating to have that two million dollars coming in, and we don't get it, our road department's gonna be two million dollars short.
Where I'm at with that, Gene, is we don't know that by the time we approve our regular budget, that we have to take it out. We can't assume that we're getting two million dollars and, and just go on with projects.
That's what I mean by we start hi- preliminary, we can start high, but when it comes to that.
I won't disagree with that.
It has to come out, that, I mean, it's hard line, but that's the way it is.
And I totally agree with that.
Yep.
If we can't, if we can't budget on it, we can't.
That's what you wanted to say, right?
So to speak, we can't budget something that we hope to get.
By the sky, nope. So anyhow, right now, that's why I brought that up. Now, I want you guys to be aware that that's not a guarantee. And by the way, that one, that one million, nine hundred and eighty, eighty eight thousand, eight ninety one, that comes out to thirty eight mils. So if we don't get it, that's how much we're gonna have to change things. All right, I'm done with township roads, if you guys are done with that. Okay? Lay that sheet to the side. Next one, I'm gonna go to state highways, page fifty nine and sixty. This one's a little bit dirty, messy. Okay, I'm gonna start in the twenty twenty one column, way at the bottom. This state highway is money that we received from the state, and we received in twenty twenty one, if you look at the very top left-hand corner, nine hundred and thirty three, four thirty nine eighty, that's what we received. That's what we transferred out. But on the bottom down there, it says we transferred out way more than that. We did not, we can't, the number might be there, but we, we could not, and the money wasn't there. So instead of being a neg- on December thirty first, instead of being a negative seventy eight, six ninety eight, that should be zero. We should have transferred out exactly what we had, nine thirty three, four thirty.
Shut up, or we did?
We had to have.
Okay.
So that's zero. So that moves us up to twenty twenty two. If you look at the end of twenty twenty two, December thirty first, again, that number at the very bottom, balanced December thirty first, should be zero. Whatever we get in, we should transfer out. And we're estimating in, in twenty twenty two to get nine fifty eight, six twenty two, and that's what we have to use, so it's zero again. So now you go over to twenty twenty three. See if I can figure this out. We have revenue of one point one six three, five eighty.
So where'd the one point one six three million come from, is that estimated from Nodaco, or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the nine fifty eight, six twenty two is what was budgeted to be transferred out, but in actual, for twenty twenty one, it was just over a million, one million, twelve thousand, one thirty eight, yeah.
That number you said was referenced from Nodaco, right?
The one point one six, correct.
Yeah, the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking that, when I read the Nodaco deal, it said that we're gonna have, uh, state aid on state highway, state highway's gonna go up five percent from twenty twenty two. So I took twenty twenty two's number, nine fifty eight, six twenty two, times one point zero five, and I came up with a different number, but you guys, I would trust Nodaco's number, which number do you wanna use, you tell me?
I would say we use Nodaco's, cause they have more information than we have.
Okay, so I'm gonna change that to one, one, six, three, I agree with you, I'm not contesting that one single bit. So we're gonna transfer out one, one, six, three, five eighty.
But I think, I see where your negative came in, cause that actual revenue was the nine thirty three for twenty twenty one. But if we received a million, twelve?
We never, I have the sheet that shows you what we received.
So we received the nine thirty three?
Yes.
Okay. But that's where that negative is carrying, but it should always be a wash.
There it is.
So it was the nine thirty, but then I have, yeah, in our expenditures, the actual amount was the one million, twelve.
I know, how can it, how can you transfer out more money than is there?
Did we receive funds from something else?
I, I don't know, that might have to be something to look into, but, I mean, it shouldn't, it should go to zero. I, I don't know, that might have to be something to look into, but, I mean, it shouldn't, it should go to zero every year, so.
I believe I looked at that.
Can't disagree. At this point, I can't disagree with Marvin.
Right, and I mean.
If you have a trial balance, or I could walk into that, it just gets really messy after a while.
Can't transfer out more, need God.
Okay, so.
So then is that seventy-eight go away here?
Hang on a second. Yep, so we're gonna go back to the state highway fund there, on page fifty-nine, and we're gonna use her number, one one six three five eighty. Line C is gonna be the same number. Line four is zero. Five A is gonna be one one six three five eighty. She's got her numbers right on the ball there.
So that one one six five three eighty is going way down.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, the question that we have is, well, no, we transfer all the money, right?
Yeah.
So, yep. So that's gonna be.
So does the seven go to zero, or does it?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, this is burning a lot of midnight oil. We got this yesterday, I went to work on it right away, so we're gonna double proof this. So that took care of the state highway. Done with that one. Now I'm down to age of secondary roads, thirteen and fourteen pages. You guys, in fairness to Samantha, ideally, I should've came in and talked to her, we will had time to do this, I got it last night. So it's a work in progress on both sides, okay? Balance on twenty twenty-one, five oh seven, five thirty-seven. If you look on the balance on January one of twenty twenty-two, that number has to be the same. It can't change. From the thirty-first to the first, from midnight to twelve oh one AM, nope, so that changes to, uh, total revenue for twenty twenty-two is nine eighty-one, eight, nine fifty-nine. We transferred out eight seventy-three, five hundred. So that gives us a balance of end of twenty twenty-two of ten thousand, no, a hundred and eight thousand, four fifty-seven. Now you take that hundred and eight, four fifty-seven, move it up to the balance of January one of twenty-three. Okay? That gives us the total revenue, if we're interested in that, of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, five five seven. In order to get our mills right, I'm proposing that we only transfer out nine hundred and twelve thousand instead of a million. When we get to the end, you guys might see why I chose that. Just trying to get all of our funds.
Did you say nine hundred and twelve?
Nine hundred and twelve thousand. So now you go to page thirteen, transfer out is nine hundred and twelve thousand. Okay, line C would be nine hundred and twelve thousand. The reserve, instead of thirty percent, I only took fifteen percent, I'm trying to save a county some money, but we agreed to thirty, but I took fifteen. Our reserve is twenty-seven thousand, two thirty-four.
What line is that?
Right underneath the one million, where it's, where it's kinda gray, cash reserve, line two.
Okay. Do you wanna reserve? In the age of secondary roads?
Yep.
Okay.
How much?
Twenty. Twenty, two, twenty si- twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four.
Okay.
It'll contribute to our total cash reserve, is what we're trying to do. Otherwise, it will all come out of county roads. So we take that, total those two together, it's nine thirty-nine, two thirty-four. That's line three. Our revenue is seventy-three, one hundred, and that's per Samantha's paper. So you add the seventy-three, one hundred, to the, hopefully I got this right.
What's with the, with line four? Does that stand? Got that number?
I got one oh eight, four five seven. No, that's supposed to be one oh eight, four five, that's supposed to be one oh eight, four five seven. Line four, one oh eight. Yep, four five seven, I have it written down there. Okay? Uh, hopefully I didn't stumble here, but so you take the, the revenue, plus the one oh eight, four five seven. It comes out to one eighty-one, five five seven.
Instead of two fifty?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, you subtract that from the, the bills up on top, the nine thirty-nine, two thirty-four. Line seven now becomes seven five seven, six seventy-seven.
Seven five seven, six seventy-seven.
Yep.
Okay.
Delinquent taxes, uh, are, I took four hundred and five thousand, four hundred and ninety, times point zero three. Delinquent taxes, Wayne said it very well last week, last meeting, it is an expense. So that gets us down to seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two.
What was your total amount for delinquent taxes that year?
Twelve thousand, one sixty-five.
Seven sixty-nine, eight forty-one?
Yep, or forty-two, whatever, we round up, I, I don't do cents.
Next year I won't either.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, uh, so you divide that by fifty-two, one nineteen, it comes out the mills of fourteen seventy-seven. So now you see why I reduced the transfer out down to nine hundred and twelve thousand.
But we're also change, or, you know, going from a levy of last year for secondary roads, what did we say? Seven, like seven eight to fourteen point seven eight, that's the one.
Let's walk through it, we'll see what we get in the end. We have, if you look at what we have right now, we're way over on our mills.
Correct.
When I get done, we'll be, we'll, we'll have enough mills to cover it.
But we're gonna be maxing out our mills still.
We'll be increasing them, they won't be maxed, but they'll be very close. Unless you guys, then af- after we do this, then you say, alright, we don't want that, we're gonna reduce expenses. And then you go back and do this again. But using the numbers we have now, that's what this is. So that's age of secondary roads. Next one's unorganized roads. Eleven and twelve. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm reaching from here a little bit. Well, looking on page twelve, we only budgeted, or we budgeted for the transfers out on twenty twenty-two, we budgeted eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred.
But we're not gonna get that this year, going through what our projected numbers are. That's why I had to change it to the eight twenty-five. For the revenue side, cause we went through our numbers when we've been receiving the funds. And I know that it was budgeted for the eight seventy-three, but we're not gonna get that.
Why? For property taxes, we, we should get the taxes, right? In lieu of taxes, I don't know why that, why we.
Because our state aid, I don't, it's gonna be closer to a hundred and two thousand than a I see what she put there, projected.
It's using your hundred and two thousand for state aid. State aid is something that we get, we can allocate however we want, right?
But that's not, I'm not just coming up with a number for that. We went back into our revenue book, saw what we're getting each month, estimated what's gonna actually come in for twenty twenty-two.
Got it.
Because it was budgeted for twenty-two, doesn't mean that that was exactly what we're gonna get in revenue.
Cause it's state aid, it's not a tax.
Yep, let me see what the. Gotcha, okay.
Yep.
Part of it's based off of gas revenue.
Yep.
Then people drive less.
Screw up my paper, see, this is where I should've ca- called her and came in, but eleven o'clock last night, there's no way I was gonna do that.
Which is funny, because I double-checked it on this one, but I must not have double-checked it on the other one, but you caught that, so that's good.
Okay.
But.
So anyways, let me finish going through this, we're gonna have to change the transfer out. Uh, let's just see, eight seventy-three, five hundred, do the math, eight seventy-three, five hundred, is actually eight twenty-five. Eight, we're gonna take the transfer out and reduce it by about forty-eight thousand, five hundred. That sound right, Samantha? So far? We'll, we'll get there. Alright, so going over to twenty twenty-three. Oh! Guess what? I used, I used her numbers. I didn't change anything for that.
Two eighty-one fifty-three.
I used the two eighty-one, fifty-three. Even though I saw that difference?
Yeah.
I said, we're going with Samantha's, so lo and behold. So our transfers out is still six eighty-two, three sixty-one. So if you go to page eleven, Samantha's number there. I am suggesting though that
The estimated tax valuation, you have a thirty-two million?
Correct, because we can include our cities.
Okay, gotcha.
Cause that's unorganized roads.
Okay, just double checking.
Yeah.
Whoa! This whole sheet's gonna be no good. I saw that and I was going, why is that? I didn't anticipate that. You know, but if I look at last year's budget, they didn't, we didn't do that. Pull up twenty-two's budget.
This is me going through it with Linda, though, when she said that you cannot have the state, uh, the cities.
For unorganized.
For unorganized roads.
Cause there's no unorganized roads in the city?
Right.
Right. Well, we have to put one in there.
Alley waste cake.
Section line over the city runs on the edge. The first time I saw that was today, this morning, when I was looking at it, I was like, what the heck? Well, that's gonna totally skew everything.
Yeah, she had the same mills across the board.
Yeah, she had to, she never. Okay, well, that's gonna kind of screw this one up, let's see if we can walk through it though. Well, we forget about the thirty-two for the time being, we'll take my numbers and move them up there. See, I wanted to transfer, Samantha, I wanted to transfer a little bit different amount of mon- money there. To get our, because we raised age of secondary roads, I wanted to reduce the mills on this one. So we stay with your six eighty-two. We're gonna have to stay with Samantha's numbers.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
End of story, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cause if we could change to yours numbers, I'm assuming.
I mean, the only thing that we can adjust is that taxable valuation, but I mean, I'm, I'm.
See that?
I'm going with this, you know, with Linda's recommendation.
I would too.
We need to stay with Linda.
That's the first I saw that in four years, you know? But it's good, no, so we're gonna stay with your number of seventeen ninety-two for eight, for unorganized roads. And your transfer is going to be six eighty-two, three sixty-one. Okay? So all my pencil's on here, Jean, don't look at it.
I was just looking at the estimated mill.
Well, we're gonna have to go with hers at seventeen point nine two.
I was looking at what you had to see how it compared, but, okay.
The only reason I got to that value is because of that mill value at the top.
Yeah.
It's huge. So let's see if we can figure this out here now.
That's almost a four mill difference.
Mm-hmm. Doggone it. Alright, now we're gonna go to county roads.
Age?
Nine and ten. This is gonna be all.
So your spreadsheet you have up there, that's active, like if we change one number, it'll?
I'm, yep, I'm changing it as we speak actually, so we can show.
Here's, here's what I had, I had for township roads, I had a transfer out of four million, one hundred thousand. State highway had nine hundred and eighty thousand. Age of secondary roads, nine hundred and twelve thousand. Unorganized roads is gonna have to be six nine eight two four thirty-eight. So you add those numbers together, I don't have them done.
Okay, can you say, repeat those numbers again?
Township roads, four million, one hundred thousand. State highway, nine hundred and eighty thousand. Age of secondary roads, nine hundred and twelve thousand. Unorganized roads, six hundred and ninety.
That should be six eighty-two, three sixty-one.
Three sixty-one.
You were looking at page nine when you.
Yep. Six eighty-two, four thirty-eight. Does anybody have those added up together yet?
Okay, so. It should be six eighty-two, three sixty-one, right?
Six eighty-two, three sixty-one.
Yeah. Cause we didn't change the numbers to what you had.
Her sheet on page nine.
Page eleven.
But you on page eleven.
You were calling it page eleven.
So I've got, just to repeat, unorganized roads, six eighty-two, three sixty-one. Secondary, uh, state aid, or the secondary aid, nine twelve.
Nine twelve.
Yep. Highway. And I pulled out.
Yep, she's going the opposite direction.
Yep, okay.
I'm just getting the totals of each.
Yep. This is the number I wrote down.
Where?
Nine twelve, secondary roads.
Age of secondary roads.
Oh, yeah, nine hundred and twelve.
And then highway, state highway, nine hundred and eighty, is that correct?
Yep, yep.
Township roads, four point one.
Yep.
And then the prairie dog, or is that included township? Is your prairie dog, your township road?
That's already included.
Okay, six point six seven four, three sixty-one.
Repeat reels.
Six point six seven four, three sixty-one.
So that's our transfers in on county road then?
Correct.
I still didn't write that number down.
Six million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-one.
Thank you.
With a thirty percent reserve?
Yeah. I'm looking for my big eraser, I use it home, but. So your total appropriation is gonna be nine million seventy-seven, is that right?
Well, it's gonna go down because of the sixty-six seventy-four.
Yep. Total appropriations, six point two five zero one sixty-six.
That's if you take out the reserve though, right?
That's, right, that's not with the thirty percent reserve.
So a question, why aren't we using your numbers and you have the reserve in there? You're looking at page nine, right?
Yeah, cause then we're three times, three and a half times what we can actually.
Over the max mills that we can do there.
So only about ten. What's your question?
Oh, I'm sorry, with.
Number right there?
No, that one.
Oh, the thirty percent?
Yeah, that's what she's got on her sheet here.
Your thirty percent, probably your numbers, when we plugged them in.
Oh, yeah, wouldn't be.
Is gonna be one point eight.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
No, no, no. Does this here change this six, six seven four, three sixty-one? Thirty percent of that number is not that number. This is here, changes to six, six, seven, four, three, sixty-one, thirty percent of that number is not that number, I think that's what she's saying.
Thirty percent of the six point two is the one point eight.
Why six point, now why you had six point two?
Cause that's our total appropriations.
I thought it was six point six.
Yeah. That's my point.
We just added all those numbers up and I thought we came to six point six seven four, three sixty-one.
Those are the transfers in.
I'm totally lost.
Let's start right from the top, alright Samantha?
Yeah.
Line one. On page nine, should be six, nine, eight, two, four thirty-eight.
That's what it's supposed to be.
So we had to go back to her numbers because of that mill value adjustment over here.
For the county road, page nine, final appropriation. I'm getting six point two five zero.
Hang on. Yep.
Cause she was changing numbers as we went.
Yep, down here is gonna change.
I'm, I'm using all of your numbers now.
Yep.
So it's, what's six point?
Six, two, five, zero, one, six, six, right?
Correct.
Six, two, five, zero, one, six, six.
Okay.
So now instead of six, nine, eight, two, it's six, two, five, zero.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay, about thirty percent of six, two, five, zero, one, six, six is?
One point eight, seven, five, zero, four, nine, four, zero, five, zero, around here.
I gotta punch that out, my brain is, we need to lock. Point three times. Six, two, five is, where?
I have extra copy there too.
Yep.
One, eight, seventy-five, oh, fifty. Okay. Total appropriation then becomes out to.
Eight point one, two, five, two, one, six, around here.
Okay. Cash and investments, hundred and nine, four, ten.
Correct.
And that's from your sheet, balance, okay? That's from the year before, end of the year before, okay? Okay, we're gonna get, earn on revenue, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, right?
Correct.
Our transfers in are now going to be different than what I have here, I had six, six, nine, two.
Six, six, seven, four, that's it.
There we go.
Okay.
Six, six, seven, four.
Three sixty-one.
Thank you. That's because of that correction on unorganized roads?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Now you add those two together, the eight thirty-six, two hundred, and the six, six, seven, four, what number do you have?
Seven million, five hundred and ten thousand, five sixty-one. Seven, five, one, zero, five, six, one.
And you add that to the one oh nine, four, ten?
Would be at seven, six, one, nine, nine seventy-one. Thirty-two cents.
Shush.
This year, not two and cents, yeah.
Okay. So now you gotta subtract that from the total reserve up on top, and what do you come up with?
Five hundred and five thousand, two forty-four, two forty-four, forty-eight, five oh five, two forty-four. Which leaves us at a mill of nine point six nine.
That didn't turn out too bad.
See that, five oh five?
Five oh five, two forty-four, point four eight.
You didn't put anything into the delinquent taxes then?
I did not.
Okay, let's leave that out. That gives us down to nine point six nine?
Correct.
I can live with that.
You're gonna have to.
I'd like, I'd like them lower, I'd like them all lower, please.
This five oh five, twenty-four is this number subtracted from that number. Comes out to this here.
Okay.
I draw lines, you see my lines all over here, right? That equals this.
Instead of this, we get this.
Yep.
What, what happens here?
So that still has the thirty percent reserve?
That's for delinquent taxes, we're, we're gonna disregard.
Oh, okay, okay, this changes to.
Alright, so that gets us up on top, let's see if I can do my. So now we're okay on county road, we're at nine point six nine, right?
Correct.
Yep.
I got a sheet here that shows all that. Nine point six nine, that's okay. Unorganized roads is thirteen point seven six.
We didn't change those numbers.
Wait, wait.
We left with the seventeen ninety-two.
Yeah, we couldn't change that because of our unorganized, our, our.
Seventeen ninety-two?
Yeah, that, that stays.
Yep.
Yeah, that one, we didn't adjust anything on.
Seven point nine two.
Okay, age of secondary roads.
Went to fourteen, seven.
Seven, seven, so that went up.
We're all within, on every one of those, we're barely underneath the umbrella, right?
Yep.
We are within our max mills.
Now you add those all together, how much is our total mills for roads?
Am I out of power on that one?
It wasn't, they didn't like the, the seven for some reason.
Lucky sevens.
Yeah, that one wasn't so lucky.
One, four, point seven, seven, plus, one, seven, point nine, two. Plus, nine point six nine.
Twenty-two point three eight.
Yep, that's what I got.
So now if you take forty-two point three eight. Times fifty-two, one, one, nine.
I don't know if you can do that because one of us.
I know it, I thought of that.
Yeah, you'd have to take away the, either take out that unorganized and do it that way.
Okay, can't do it.
But, if we wanna compare from last year's.
It's hard too, cause last year she had the wrong mill value in her one, two.
That's still the numbers we went by though.
Yep, okay. So anyhow, that's what I did with, that's how I came up with the mills, to get all those funds to be underneath the mill levy. And we are the, underneath the threshold.
So what was our total, forty?
Two.
Forty-two point three.
And last year's, our total mills was twenty-nine point eight five.
Last year's was one point five million dollars, and this time we're gonna be.
Two point two.
Yep. Okay, so that's what I did with the roads, so I wanted you guys to see what I, how I came up with those numbers, I walked through it. And I guess what I would say for the preliminary budget.
We could, we could stick with those and we could still look at reducing it some more.
Right, cause we can bring down, we can cut.
Correct.
Yeah.
Once we get to final.
At least we're gonna approve a preliminary budget that falls within what we can budget.
In parameters, yeah.
Let me, let me ask you this then, beings who are so close to the threshold, why don't we just approve the maximum for each one? We can come down.
Yeah, I was kinda thinking that to begin with, cause the number of projects we have.
With everything that's there, and we're so close to the maximum, like seventeen point nine two, change it to eighteen, what's the, you know? So why don't we just maximize?
Well, because we don't want to, cause hopefully by the end of this, or by September, we're gonna have those down a little bit more. No? You guys are just wanting to straight up approve this at the max mills?
For the preliminary?
Well, yeah.
We're not approving, what are we approving, one mill?
Well, I kinda get what Samantha's trying to say too, we already.
I wanna, I wanna kinda keep it where we're at, so that way we're not like, you know, going up and then trying to figure the numbers again. Like that's just, use what we're using now.
I agree with Sam.
Yeah.
Just keep it where it's way or, you know.
My thought process at the beginning was is we couldn't figure out where to cut, we just hit the max, but now we've gotten under it.
We're, we're within one point two of the max.
Right.
But we're gonna stay with what you said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Let's stay with, but where we're at right now. With the changes that were just made. Because. I, it's kinda the feeling here is, we may be making more cuts.
Keep in mind that this sheet that I gave you, that shows the cost of these projects. We might have six hundred and some thousand more there that Travis told us he had in his back pocket.
I added that into our revenue, oh.
No?
No.
Cause now those are, yeah.
Yeah. And you said, he texted you that it was approved?
It was approved, yep.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's that.
That's an eighty-twenty split on the.
Okay.
One project that was like a million dollars.
And what did we do? I hate backing up.
Which project was that?
Trade off cost, what do we have?
Leave them in there for now.
Left them in there.
Okay. That one.
Okay, I'm done with the roads.
Okay.
Okay, can we move to the general?
Let's move to the general.
And then we might, if we get that one under, I think we might approve it as.
Yeah.
As is, and then.
I just wanted to make a correction too, earlier I said that the, I believe it was bed services was point seven eight, but the mill is a point five zero.
The max mill?
Their max mill, I think is two, but.
Oh, okay.
We went from last year with point one five nine, I had, I had this point five zero. That's what, some of those accounts she reserved, like kept the, moved last year's reserve kind of into, but she didn't do that with, um, the veteran services, so I took that out.
Okay.
Okay.
On a multi-million dollar budget, that little change isn't a whole lot, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just saying, I don't, I want, I want there to be complete transparency, I don't want any.
So, general fund.
I did some adjusting on the general fund too, if I may please.
Or page, yeah.
Seven and eight, and I wanna go to page eight right away. Actually, you're gonna go from three to eight, most of it. If you look on the end of twenty twenty-one, two numbers got transposed here. Twenty twenty-one is one point six. And twenty twenty-two is one oh six.
Oh, yep. We're going with the one point six oh two?
Yes. So if you'd go with the one, six oh two, four thirty-three. The bottom on December thirty-first should be one, two, thirty-three, five ninety-eight, or five ninety-seven. Say that. One million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
For balance.
Yep, now that gets moved up to balance on January one, of twenty-three.
Okay, wait, um, which, which number were you using?
The bottom number on.
So, uh, December thirty-first under twenty-one.
Yeah, one point six, so we're changing the one, yeah, one sixty-two to the one point six, okay.
Yep, yep.
Gotcha.
And then that adjusts the next balance December.
Into December, and then you gotta move that up there, and then, uh, balance on January one is. One, two, thirty-three, or, yeah, five ninety-eight. So, you take that one ninety-three, five ninety-eight, what did I do with it? I think now I gotta go to the front page. Yeah, I did. Alright, go to page three. Leaving all of Samantha's numbers as they are. Until you get down to line four. Line four should be one million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five ninety-eight. So you take that. Add those numbers together on line six. You're gonna be four million, three hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five. And you're gonna subtract that from the reserve up on top, of eight million, you're gonna, on line, these darn papers are so hard to follow across, aren't they? Maybe it's just me.
Line seven?
Line seven, it would be three million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and two.
And then our total not letting us.
Well, I put in, I put in, uh. Delinquent tax. And by delinquent tax, I calculated by taking the taxes, which was two fifty-four. Or two million, five forty-five, zero, zero, one. Times point zero three. That comes out to seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty. That makes line nine. At three million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, zero fifty-two. I got the mills down to seventy-two mills, or still too high.
Well, they didn't, cause they didn't go down, they went up, but that was my mistake.
Just a typo, you know, that's why we looked at them, right?
So.
So we have to reduce the, that budget. By eight mills. Right?
So eight times the fifty-two?
Actually, you gotta reduce it, we're at seventy-two mills.
We need, yeah, to reduce it by twelve.
By twelve, yeah.
Yep.
Which is.
Why do you say twelve?
Cause it's gotta be sixty or less.
Sixty.
Well, we're at seventy-two, that's right, twelve.
So we've got a, look, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, to reduce it.
I come up to six twenty-eight, five, 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 cause it was seventy-two point oh six, minus sixty.
But, it comes out to.
Six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five, must be reduced. And, you guys aren't gonna like this one, but. I didn't see tax and financial software in there. That expense item.
The fin- right, so the financial software, I was just, I, that's what I wanted to mention, I don't have it in here, I'm banking the. I'm banking that on the rest of the ARPA funds for software.
That won't be sufficient, but we need to do something there. The rest of the ARPA fund, you came out to. Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. That probably is enough, that probably is.
Okay.
Yep.
Two hundred and what, seventy-seven?
Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one.
Is what's left of the ARPA?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, but you still have to reduce the general fund by six, six.
So, twenty-eight.
That's including that. Um. That's including adding an additional employee for Carmen. And the buildings and grounds for the boilers.
That doesn't even come close though, to the six hundred and twenty-eight.
Well, five hundred thousand of it is boilers.
Show me that. Show me where you have the boilers on the expense sheets.
In buildings and grounds?
Do you know what page that is? That's in this pamphlet?
Yeah, it's on page six.
Yeah, that's on the.
Good job. Got it in there. That's where the boilers.
Yeah, that's his total request for building and grounds, it's gonna be the six seventy-four.
Page six of this.
Of this.
Yep, about halfway.
I'm sorry, page six on the, yeah.
I also noticed that, well, no, that's fine, I understand that. Okay. Now.
So here's another thing too, that might help with our reven- I'm sorry, Margaret, go ahead.
Well, I'm interrupting you, so.
That might help with our revenue portion, so we just took the fed aid that we've been receiving so far this year. And calculated an estimate, uh, but if we take. An estimate eighty, cause we get eighty per day.
Are you talking about the inmates?
And time the fed inmates, correct, yes.
Okay.
Um, and Terry estimates that he wants to hold about twenty, and then if we, if that, that's an average for three sixty-five, that's about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that, right now I just have it in there. Um, and Terry estimates that he wants to hold about twenty, and then if we, if that, that's an average for three sixty five, that's about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that, right now I just have it in there as. Two forty, cause I was just going off of this year's.
Yeah. I'd wanna be conservative, but.
Right.
If we're half, that's way too conservative.
Yeah.
Uh, what do you think, like three fifty maybe?
Cause we're not gonna be at twenty every single day.
Every single day, and they're gonna have to move them around and stuff like that, so I would say fifteen.
Go at seventy, seven, go at six? No. What'd you say?
Well, we wanna come in a little bit short.
Right.
So, five hundred, it's cause we, I was estimating five eighty at twenty? Or we can even do like four eighty?
Where we at?
Five eighty, uh, we're on page five. It's third line down. Federal government assistance, she's got it at two forty, she assumes it's, we're, I think it's closer to five eighty?
If we, yeah, if we're gonna generate.
If we hold the full twenty, correct?
If you take five eighty times point seven five, what does it come out to be? There's three fourths of it.
Sounds like a fifteen average?
Right, that's what I was thinking, an average of fifteen would be.
Four thirty five?
Yeah.
So that helps us a little bit.
Right.
So that would be an increase of.
Three forty.
My, my brain is dead.
And that brings us down to sixty eight mills. Waiting to be set in revenue to four thirty five.
But then how'd you project the expenses on the, kinda where we're at now, or?
So, well, no, cause, um, Terry projected his own expenses. And he doubled it for how much it was gonna be, I believe it was.
So that's already in there?
That's already in there.
It was in the expenditures, yeah.
That's what you're saying? Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we, cause there are additional expenses.
Right.
Right.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
So he had upped his contracts. Uh, for maintenance, and then obviously gas, Fed inmate, prisoner medical, he, um, jumped that up to double, and then jail expenses, he doubled that expenditure, so. That should include, or that should give us an idea of. Doubling the Fed inmates. On the expenditure side.
So, right, the wages come out of the general.
Yeah.
Correct.
So we're gonna have to possibly adjust. The folks across the, the tax director's side.
This does include CDs, yeah, on the pay from the.
And, and, um. I don't, I don't know how you feel about that nine one one, uh. But. Uh, I mean, we've had this system for twenty some, some years with one individual, and when money comes to crunching, I think she's just gonna have to stick with one individual, and that's herself. And go with, go with the flow, I, I mean, every time you put a. People on payroll, you know, we don't have to explain that, we know how the expenditure. Is our, and plus the benefit package onto that, so.
Yeah.
I know she may not like that, but I, I, at the time, I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah, how much would that drop it down if we took out Carmen's?
Um, so that is, she's requesting a hundred and twenty four thousand, eight hundred and three with the.
Second person?
Yep, and it would be seventy eight, eight one eight without it, so that.
Was she proposing full time or part time?
Correct, full time.
Full time.
It was full time, yeah.
No, emergency, karma's department.
I'm not seeing it as management.
I can't keep up with you guys.
Forty five, um, just under forty six thousand difference.
Percent.
How much was Carmen's extra help?
About forty six.
Forty six thousand, approximately. I'm gonna say something that's gonna make me really unpopular. If we stayed with last year's budget. The difference, difference on page six. From twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Six hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred dollars. It's just about what we need to make up. And we could still afford the extra help if we needed it.
The biggest place to cut in there would be the boiler system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The which one?
The buildings and ground.
Buildings and grounds.
And, I mean, after we moved that twenty five thousand, cause we have that line item where we are saving into the buildings and grounds.
I'd say, how much does he have in there now?
He's got. Fifty two, nine eighty as of Ju, uh, July. Thirtieth, but we haven't transferred that twenty five thousand, and so, I mean, he's not anywhere close.
Six, seventy, eighty thousand. The boilers. If I'm not mistaken, it's been a while since I walked that job down with him, one of them needs to be replaced. I don't know which one it was, and I don't know what the cost is. I think one of them needs to stay, so. The total, five hundred, possibly not, could always be moved for one more year.
Right.
Oh, now it's a total for both boiler, or for the whole boiler.
For the whole thing, right?
That was, I believe, is what we got, and that was for the whole.
And, I mean, this, this is my thought process. You, we can go whichever direction, but. One time large expenses. I don't know if they should necessarily, necessarily be figured in to the tax. You should dip into your reserves or something like that, or you've been building a fund. I mean, it's gonna be the easiest way to balance the budget, to take that out, but we could still do the expense, we just have to deficit spend. On a one time fix. I don't know if you're following what I'm saying, but I mean, it's not included into twenty three's taxes, but it still might be an expense. We just have to take it out of some of our reserves.
Yeah, so you're talking from. The reserves that we are calculating for twenty twenty three, or you're tapping reserves like a CD that might be coming due?
It's more like the CD that's coming due or something like that.
Which we do have one for five hundred thousand that's gonna do whatever. Now, I've been advised that that's not the best case scenario, is do you tap into your CD funds, but.
I'm gonna state what I've stated many, many, many times. If we're having to subsidize our general fund, we're doing something wrong. Our general fund, our normal income should cover our normal expenses. If we haven't been putting enough in the building fund to cover what ifs. It's time that we start doing it. I don't, I don't wanna use a CD, I don't wanna use savings, I don't wanna subsidize our general fund in any way.
And I'm not necessarily saying subsidizing, I'm just saying.
It's a hard word, but that's what you do when you put money in there that isn't normal revenue. But it's a one time.
But what?
I'm saying, the weird thing with, yeah.
It, it.
Is that this is not like an every year thing that we're gonna have to do.
I mean, you know, if you look at the landfill, we've essentially corrected the issue that was not being done correctly.
We should have done it.
What wasn't done correctly.
This is one that might be on a similar line, and maybe we should have been putting more into that.
Building fund.
That building fund.
But to kind of.
Cause you.
To say what Travis was saying also. Uh, one time expenditures, um. I got a hard time government putting. Having whatever, a million. When, I don't know how much money we have in CDs, but, okay, now I know we got one that's a half a million dollars. And just leave that there. But tell our taxpayers, oh, we're gonna raise your taxes for this one time expenditure.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you use that half million you got in your savings account?
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
Well, not just that, we're only actually, you know, legally, we're only supposed to have a max reserve. We can't go over a certain amount.
Right.
So are those CDs putting us over a certain amount?
The answer is.
We keep requesting that our taxpayers play more and more each year, like, you know, as you're saying.
The answer is you're supposed to have seventy, up to, you can't exceed, since, since.
Seventy five.
Seventy five percent, and if you look at our appropriation for general fund, it's seven million dollars. So do we have? Four point nine million dollars in CDs?
I would have to check the, on, on our CD report.
No, I did do. A, a survey with a lot of other counties, asking in what they put in their reserve. I can bring you that. The. Thirty percent is what they wanted, most of them wanted, at least thirty percent. We're at fifteen percent.
And another good rule it's on too is, yeah, three months of revenue generated, put towards your, put towards your revenue, so that usually is about sixteen percent. Present, reserve.
So, the treasurer's report from June thirtieth. Certificate of deposit, one point six five million. Um, building improvements, a hundred and thirty one, seven sixteen. Weed board CD, seventy four thousand, five seventy. Carers funding, no, American West funding, no. There's a DT, DT C, CD at one point one four million. ICS at three point three, three, four million. And the other one's a bond, but, so I mean, if we go three, that's four point four.
The weed board.
We're at six, we're at over six million in CDs. So we are at basically seventy, seventy five percent.
So, we probably should use that money to put in the boilers.
Which would take it out of.
Which would take it out of our general fund too.
Are we keeping, okay, before I move from my page here, we left off on, are we keeping Carmen's at the plus employee?
At this point, we haven't cut that yet. At this point.
I'm gonna change that.
Well, right, you don't, don't change it yet, but I have a hard time.
Buildings and, okay.
Hard time agreeing to it when we're way over budget.
Right.
So I haven't, I personally haven't agreed to that yet.
Gotcha.
I just.
No, and I'm just saying, we have.
Yeah.
So we.
But to answer your question, yes, leave it there for now.
I'm leaving it there.
Okay.
So, my question is, do we? Leave the boilers and then add the revenue of the CD?
So if we take the boiler. Out of our budget and say we're gonna pay it with a CD, what's that, was, does that reduce our?
Okay, if we take the boilers out of there, it's gonna be a difference of five hundred thousand, so two hundred and seventy four thousand.
Which line was that again?
Uh, it's on page six, oh, almost halfway down.
Oh, yeah, seven seventy four, okay.
So it'd be two seventy four.
Okay, so that changes, plus we added the Fed inmate, we jumped that up.
Yep, on page five.
Right. Yep.
That puts us at fifty seven point two nine metals. With those two adjustments.
Gets us to what?
Fifty seven point two nine.
Okay.
So we're under them.
And what we're, what we're saying is we're not necessarily taking. The boiler system out of the budget, it's just not gonna be.
We're gonna fund it in a different way.
Fund it in a different way.
I, I just didn't know if our system had to reflect that we were gonna fund it that way, and it had to be in here, to show that we were gonna, you know what I mean?
I know. I know what you're saying.
If you ask me, and I'm not a money person, a bu, a, an accountant, but. I would say we should somehow show that money going in and back out.
Right.
It kind of blows up.
Yeah.
Blows up your, um, budgeting, but we should have, show it coming into our budget. And then going right back out. I don't know how, I'm not one who knows exactly how to do that.
It's called a transfer in, transfer in from CD, whatever, yeah, five hundred thousand.
Cause it.
And then you have the, then you leave the expense line on there for seven seventy four.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I was wondering if we need to do to show that.
So, so we'd have to.
Increase the transfer in for, for five hundred dollars. In the end of the day, if it don't work, it don't work.
However, it works, yeah, I agree that, as long as we show it in our budget somehow.
Correct.
Not that it's some phantom thing off on the side.
Well, that's a good point, Gene.
Real good point.
Yeah.
And of course, there's always cost. Finally, you know, it's possible.
Right.
So.
So, but, if it's something to go with the transfer in.
Well, you're under sixty, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're at a budget we can, we can, per preliminary budget, we could pass.
Correct.
We need to get it under those numbers, and we can always.
Go down.
Do some more.
Which I think we will.
Yeah. But we needed to get it to where. We're within our limits anyway.
Yep.
So, I know, but I don't know.
So Samantha.
Are not coming out accurate here.
What line item are you putting that, that five hundred thousand into revenue?
I'm not putting it under revenue, I'm putting in the transfers in. Cause it'll be coming from the CD. So on.
Transfers in.
So on page. Eight. If you go all the way down to the bottom. We'll put transfers in, five hundred thousand.
Under the twenty three requested.
Okay.
Let's la, let's label that too, so when we look at this two years from now.
Yep.
Five hundred thousand, who did that, who, you know, all these questions, transfer in boiler replacement or something.
Same, yeah.
Transfer.
I wonder if I could just put a message to the site.
Well, I think you could put a comment in your spreadsheet, that just said, transfer in from what?
Like, write his little box out.
Yeah.
I have.
One.
Yep, that'd be good, because.
Transfer in is like, where'd it come from?
Very smart.
That's a very smart one, I asked, where'd that come from?
You said transfer in.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay, I have boiler replacement from CD.
Yep.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
That'll work for me.
Okay. But, when I put transfers in and then change that back to seven seventy four.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay. Yes.
When I go back to my calculation page, it's coming up with a mill of fifty eight point seven three, and I was at what, fifty seven point two nine?
Yeah.
So I don't know why that.
Yeah, fifty seven point two nine is what you had said. I mean, you said it comes up to fifty eight point what?
Seven three.
Yeah, it's probably like four thousand dollars.
Unless I typed out something here.
Oh. I lost my.
Seven seventy four.
These are below the sixty.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which I'm comfortable with on a preliminary.
But I don't know, yeah.
On prelim, yeah.
I'll have to, yeah, look at that then.
Yeah, what do, what happens if you make it five forty instead of five hundred? Cause we were talking around numbers before.
For the transfer in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty seven point nine six.
Tired than hungry.
Yeah.
Hangry.
Yeah, you're closer.
It's a Monday.
Okay, are we leaving that at five hundred or five forty? I believe the CD is for five, five hundred thousand, like.
Well, then.
Five hundred.
We'll leave it at five hundred.
And then it's gonna be, yeah, fifty eight.
Seventy three, right?
We're at least under the mills, maximum mills that we have to agree to.
So that.
At this point.
Fifty eight point seven three.
This is how you put money in CDs is for, not differently.
Right, I mean, that's what they're there for, like, to, to never use them.
It's not right.
Is not right.
Is not gonna work, yeah.
And then you want.
Like you said, I don't.
Tell our state legislators that.
Right, I'm not, not okay with raising taxes when we got money sitting there that we need to use for it. Just not okay with that.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, I stand for a motion to approve the preliminary budget with changes as presented.
Question for Samantha. You gonna put all those numbers into the email to new budget?
I am definitely going to email everybody the, um.
And send Wayne his. And send Wayne his.
And me, possibly, just to make sure that I follow my numbers matching with the one you wrote up, cause.
Help me to walk through that again?
That, yeah, I just wanna make sure that.
What if I change everything now?
Huh?
Not inten- not intentionally, yes, walk through it.
Or, I like, no. It's not an option, Marvin.
Marvin, when you were a kid, Marvin, remember when everybody sat on you?
Those transfers, I didn't change these general fund numbers.
Okay, let's see, we'll walk through this again.
That'll change this sheet, okay, but that's fine.
Fifty-three and fifty-four, Don Shiprose.
Three, fifty-four.
On the end of, on the bottom of twenty twenty-two, I have two thou- two million, fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight. The reason why is because we had to pencil in a transfer out of two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. So I moved that over to twenty twenty-three, revenue, two million, oh, fifty-one, nine, seventy-eight. It gives us a total revenue of four million, one hundred and thirty dollars and sixty, eight hundred and sixty-nine. Of that number, I recommended on page fifty-three, that four million, one hundred thousand be transferred into the. It's gonna go to the county loans to transfer out. So that gives us four point one million dollars on line C. On line four, we have two million, oh, fifty-one, nine, seventy-eight. On line six, we have four million, one hundred and thirty-eight, sixty-nine. Ending fund balance is three, thirty thousand, eight, sixty-nine. I did one, that's one out of three, you guys mark this down. Okay, I'm, uh, which one now? Got these pages numbered, I don't remember.
Now you're all the way up to about seven and eight or something like that, eight and nine, maybe?
So we're gonna go to State Island, fifty-nine and sixty.
Page fifty-nine and sixty?
Yep. This one here, there was a, a difference in the amount that was transferred out, so I changed that. So basically, on the bottom of twenty twenty-two, it's zero. So when you go over to twenty twenty-three, revenue is one, one, six, three, five, eighty. And.
That's it.
That should be it. On the transfers out, I left it at one, sixty-three, five, eighty. Yep, then at, uh, line four, on page fifty-nine now, line four is zero. So line C is one, one, six, three, five, eighty. And we end up with one, zero, eight, four, eight, eight, one. And up.
No, it's one, one, six, five, one, one, sixty, five, eight.
It should all just be straight across the board, right?
Right, the one, one. Yep.
Okay.
All right, so that's State Island. I can't believe you're making me do this, that's gonna be kinda like a hard one.
Well, if not, you're gonna come back and be like, eh, that's not what I said.
Can I do that eh thing? Okay, eight to secondary rows, thirteen and fourteen. When you guys get this new sheet from Samantha, please go through these yourself. If you see an eh, bring it up, okay? I was burning some pretty late hours. All right, eight to secondary rows, start on the back page. There was a typo again here. December thirty-first of twenty-one and January one of twenty twenty-two was different. I'm using the five oh seven, so I ended up with transfers, or, uh, the bottom of twenty twenty-two should be one hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And I move that over to twenty twenty-three, total revenue is one eighty-one, five, five, seven. I recommended only transferring nine hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and tw- yeah, nine hundred and twelve thousand instead of a million. So you're gonna see that on page one, or page thirteen, line one. And line C. The cash reserve, I put at twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four. And I got that by taking a one eighty-one, five, five, seven times point one five. That's our total revenue. Okay, so that gives the total appropriation of nine thirty-nine, two thirty-four. We have a cash reserve that carried over of one oh eight, five, four, fifty-seven. And all those up together, it comes out to.
One eighty-one, five, five, seven.
I'm missing something. Yeah, one eighty-one, five, five, seven. Now you're gonna subtract that from nine thirty-nine, two thirty-four, come out to seven fifty-seven, six seventy-seven. Divide that out by fifty-two, one, one, nine, it comes out to fourteen point seven seven.
Yeah, twelve, one, sixty-six and, you know.
Okay, which one we got left yet?
The other one stayed the same.
Yeah. We didn't change any.
We couldn't change it, cause remember the numbers were different.
Right, what's Samantha said on that one?
Yeah.
Right.
So, how did he wrote, that's on page nine and ten? I got a bunch of Googles, I can't remember which ones I pulled up. Adjust the budget numbers. Oh, that's, well, first off, we're gonna adjust the budget numbers. Consultant fees went to four ninety-eight, seven twenty-eight. And construction costs went to three million, one seventy-four thousand, that was on that blue sheet that I had, the blue lines.
Four ninety-eight, seven twenty-eight and three million, one seventy-four.
Yep.
Okay. But in my revenue, I still have the six eighty grant, the six hundred and eighty thousand grant.
Where you have the revenue?
Uh, be page ten.
On page ten, up at the top. See, I had already included the.
The what?
The grant, that eighty, twenty grant.
Oh. See, I put, I did bring it up when I was talking about this, but I do have question marks beside it.
Right.
Where the heck did that come from?
That, that's that possible grant, which we just.
Just verified we get.
Let's just leave it in there then, we're good.
Yep.
Okay.
We had confirmation today that it's there, right?
From our meeting, from you guys is what you were sent in originally, that you had gone over with Charlie, it was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Is that still what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
So everything's good.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
Yeah, if we got confirmation that we're getting that money, then we can include it.
Okay, great. Gotcha.
Oh, what we got left to do on that one?
So just go through the first page there, which I'll go through my numbers and make sure that, since you've got a bunch of scribble, yeah, so we're on.
Well, I got on line two, I've got six million, two hundred and fifty thousand, one, sixty-six.
Yep.
On the reserve, I have one million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, zero, five, zero.
Correct. Now, just remember when you get this, I have the cents in there, so.
Don't worry, that's.
Okay.
You guys remember that I don't, hers is right.
Yeah, close enough.
So anyhow, on line three C is eight million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixteen.
Yes.
I had a revenue of carryover of a hundred and nine thousand, right?
Yes.
Yep, carryover. And we had revenue of six, six, seven, four, three, sixty-one. Add those together, it comes to seven, five, one, zero, five, sixty-one. Then you add that last number I gave you to the one oh nine, it comes out to seven, six, one, nine, nine, seven, one. Subtract that from eight, one, two, five, two, one, six, and come up with five oh five, two, forty-four. And we never put anything on the, liquid on this one.
Yep, all right.
Divide that by fifty-two, oh, nineteen, it comes out to nine point six nine.
Yep.
And don't.
Thank you for doing that.
I can't do it three times.
It's gonna be whatever comes on. I think we all share.
Okay.
Unless we approve the preliminary budget.
So then I can make a motion to approve the preliminary budget as amended at this meeting.
Okay, motion by Gene to approve the preliminary budget as amended at this meeting, is there a second?
A second.
Say my Liza, any discussion?
Are we going to ensure that we're going to put that, harp of money towards tax and financial software? I don't want a budget that we don't include in that.
Uh, at this point, I would rather not. Dedicate that money until we get further down the road.
Till we do the final budget?
Yeah. Cause we, it, we don't have to do that, it's recommended, but let's.
I still want that in the final budget, but it doesn't have to be in this budget.
Okay.
Here's my stance on that. We agreed to it in writing that we would do it. If we don't do it, and it comes up in another audit, uh, our board is the one that chose not to do it.
Correct.
Not the auditor, so it's our board, it's our game, it's on the line.
Right.
Okay.
I wanted it, I actually wanted it in this budget, so.
And it may end up there.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, just to verify too, that we need to look into the landfill questions about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
What, what we can use.
What percentage of the operational funds can we utilize?
Cause we may end up using most of it.
And then also possibly, uh, changing the fees?
Yep.
I think that's gonna, yeah, I think that's gonna happen.
And then looking into the loan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, we're gonna write that all down.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary budget? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I vote aye.
I vote nay.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
The reason for my vote is because I wanted to include tax and financial software.
Yep, that's, we understand.
I just want the public to understand.
And with that, our special meeting is over, thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
You guys want me to mail you guys a hard copy and email?
Just one hard copy. Thank you, Samantha.
I would like a hard copy, actually.
I like a hard copy.
All right, I'm gonna send out both.